All right, good evening. I am Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council's November 7th regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note that public comment speaker time may be limited. I would like to begin by introducing city council members and staff present. We have Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor and city council members Maria Dorr and Betsy Nash. City Council member Drew Combs is absent this evening. Staff present this evening include our city manager Justin Murphy, our assistant city manager Stephen Stoltay, and our assistant city attorney Mary Wagner. And of course, we have our city clerk Judy Heron. So City Clerk Karen, can you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison, and again echoing a welcome to our November 7th regular city council meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment this evening. After the mayor calls for public comment on that item, if you are participating virtually, we'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. If participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. That concludes my instructions, Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. We are moving on to C, which is our agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and of any requests from city council members under city council member reports. Please note that staff will be providing an update to item F1. So does the city council wish to pull or modify any other agenda item to be heard after the last study session item G2? Okay, not seeing any. We are moving on to our public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. I will be calling for public comment this evening at the appropriate times for members of the public to address the city council on the following item agenda sections: presentations and proclamations, consent calendar, study session, and informational items. So at this time, City Clerk Karen, can you please call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment or an item not on tonight's agenda, if you're participating virtually, now's the time to engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, now complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Okay, I currently have three speakers and this will be the final call for public comment on agenda item D, public comment. Okay, so we have three speakers with our final speaker being Jane Perry. And our first speaker will be Bill Kirsch, followed by Pam Jones.
Mayor and city council members, I thank you for your work and honor your work. I know your job is thankless sometimes, but that's democracy, so thank you for your hard work. I just want to first thank the council and city staff for the great job that they did on Middle Avenue from El Camino to University and also for the quick build projects at the intersections there at Drager's on Menlo and University and also at Ravenswood down by Alma, eliminating that one westbound lane that didn't need to be there. I think Complete Streets had been advocating to get rid of that for years, but anyway, thank you for doing that. And I just encourage the city, city staff to do more quick build projects, trials. If you see a problem, let's do a trial. Let's not wait for a big consulting project. Do a trial, get something out there on the street and see if it works. If it doesn't work, it can be pulled up. Specific to the project on Middle, there's a couple of things that I think need to be done. One is the bike lane on the opposite side of the street from Nealon Park, so it's going eastbound towards El Camino. There, it's a bike lane, a buffered bike lane, which is fantastic, but there are no markings on the street to indicate that it's a bike lane. So what I've seen happening now is that cars that are utilizing Nealon Park are parking in the bike lane. To me, that's a crazy thing because that's so dangerous to be running a little child across the street. So the city needs to put in bike lane markings on the pavement like they do everywhere else to indicate to drivers that this is a bike lane. And also the no-stopping signs, there's not enough of them and they're barely visible. They're, they're on the inside of the sidewalk on, on the property of the residence and you can't really see them. So we need to tackle that, get cars off of that. And, and folks need to understand that we have a huge amount of parking behind Park and Little House and along the side there as you enter. They need to know about that, maybe some signage. The other thing is cars still drive, they've slowed down, but they still drive too fast on Middle. So we really need a speed table where that crossing is that goes right into Nealon Park, the pedestrian crossing. You have one right out here, right on Laurel. You have a, what do you call it, a speed table. It's a safe place for pedestrians to cross. So let's get some speed tables out there. They go to Nealon and also at San Mateo Avenue. I'd love to see a speeds table. The, the stop sign is great, but there needs to be a speed table or a speed hump or something to slow traffic on those streets. I just asked one last thing is try driving the speed limit around Menlo Park. You'll get tailgated all the time. I try to drive the speed limit, I'm always tailgated, even five miles above the speed, I get tailgated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
Our next speaker is Pam Jones, followed by Jane Perry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Pam D. Jones, Menlo Park resident, Bellhaven neighborhood. I belong to several organizations and I sit on several boards, but I'm speaking only for myself. I would first like to acknowledge the work that Park and Recreation and the Library Commissions did by spending hours listening to multiple comments and passionate statements, which is a part of the naming process of our new community complex. Just watch those videos, they did an amazing, amazing job. I feel it's important that we have a large picture of the front of that building, the way it looks today, not any renderings, but exactly how it looks today. And then we need to have exactly where the name is going to be and the size of the name. Not having that information is a handicap. For example, my suggestion now is it should be named Bellhaven Onetta Community Complex. Is there enough room? Is there only so many words that we can use? Also, why we can't use the rest of the outside of the building? The walls on the inside of the building should allow whatever's decided by the community, such as pictures, plaques, storyboards, and so on, that can be posted. In spite of significant gentrification and displacement, we are still the most diverse neighborhood in Menlo Park. A displaced case for Menlo Park Historical Association that would have historical artifacts related to the Bellhaven neighborhood should also be considered. In addition, it is important to engage the seniors in deciding the decor and exactly how their area is going to work. After all, we know that they're the only ones other than staff that are going to be there five days a week. So it's important that they're in a place that they're comfortable. Actually, I'm thinking that there should be a field trip. I think it's probably safe enough now for the seniors with the staff that works with them, the staff on the boots on the ground. Take them over there, have them look at it and have them think about what do we want here and how do we want it to look? The cook should have the opportunity to see the kitchen and to be reassured they will receive training on the modern cooking equipment. I'm certain there are other details that I failed to mention, but I'm off to a pretty good start. Thank you.
And our final speaker will be Jane Perry. Jane, you should be able to unmute your end at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to piggyback on her with the Onetta Harris Center being changed. I think it should just stay the same. And I don't know what phase we're in now with the renaming of it. Have we made a conclusion on that as of yet?
So usually we don't participate in a back and forth during public comment. There will be a decision by the city council, I believe, at the next city council meeting on November 14th.
Okay. And the other thing is going down Pierce Road next to the Highway 101, there are cars parked along that area. You can't even go by, two cars can't even go by. And next to the Boys Club, so there was a big bus picking up employees, I guess, somewhere around the Boys Club, and it couldn't hardly turn. I'm going down towards Willow Road, the other car is going towards the Onetta Harris Center on Pierce Road. There's cars parked all along the wall and that's not a parking place. So if we can have someone look into that, do something about that, because two cars at a time, I grew up there all my life. I've never seen cars parked next to Highway 101. And it's not a parking place. They just made it a parking place. So can that be on the next agenda? If so.
Ma'am, again, this is just.
Yes, I understand it's just public comment, but, but it really needs to be looked at. I mean, it's ridiculous now. Okay, thank you.
Jane Perry was our last hand at the final call for public comment, so we are concluding our item D, public comment.
Thank you. I, I think in this case we'll make an exception. I see David Yoshida with his hand raised. I do want to let members of the public know that we are going to be cutting off public comment time after the city clerk calls for last call for public comment. I know that's a relatively new practice for us. So at this moment, I will go ahead and make an exception, but going forward, when the city clerk calls for public comment, please do raise your hand or, or you'll miss that last call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So our final speaker will be David Yoshida. David, you should be able to unmute now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. David Yoshida, we've lived in West Menlo since 1975, longtime Menlo Park resident. So lately, my wife and I have been going to Nealon Park and we drive up Santa Cruz and onto Middle. And I have two comments with regard to the bike lanes on Middle from, I guess that's Olive to El Camino. The first comment has to do with engineering. I am a civil engineer by training, education. And when an engineer paves over an area, they make an accounting for the rainfall that is, instead of going into the ground, it flows off pavement. So in that regard, we have been eliminating parking along Middle. And if you eliminate parking spaces on Middle, I think it behooves the city to provide additional parking someplace else. So what's happening is that cars that were parking on Middle are parking on the off streets. So the other observation is at Nealon Park, yes, there are plenty of parking spaces, but when we have doggy park time, eight o'clock to 10 o'clock, and we have people playing pickleball, a lot of cars are parking in the dirt. So requests would be to make additional accommodations there at Nealon Park for paved parking, additional paved parking because of the loss of parking spaces along the curb. One other idea I'd like you to consider is like the commute lanes on the freeway. There's a morning commute and an afternoon commute. We've got bicycles, kids that go to school in the morning and they come home in the afternoon. And the question is between times 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM or something like that, whether we can provide limited parking along the curb of Middle. That's an idea that I would like to propose and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no further hands or cards, Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you. I do want to thank all of our public speakers. It can be difficult to make public comment and to not hear a response from the city council. Public comment is a time for members of the public to speak about any item not on the agenda. The city council is not at liberty to discuss new items that have not been agendized. It's under California law. And so we have to be very careful how we respond, but I want to let you know that we are all listening, taking notes. I know the staff is listening as well. I do know that there's some information that we can probably share regarding some of the comments, particularly around Middle Avenue in an upcoming meeting. And there's, it's actually a pilot right now being run. I think we already mentioned the date of the naming meeting. I'm trying to look what else there is, but I don't know if any member of staff has any informational update regarding any of the comments we heard. So city manager Murphy, I don't know if you wanted to provide, at least when is the middle, next middle pilot? There's a public meeting tomorrow night with the Complete Streets. I see city manager Murphy.
Correct, yes. And so that's about the criteria for the pilot, but at least that's, the, the subject matter is about Middle, Middle Avenue and the buffered bike lanes, but it is somewhat limited with what, what the intent was for tomorrow night's meeting, but that's, that would be a decent opportunity for the people that were interested in the topic of Middle Avenue.
Thank you. And I do know that the Middle Avenue pilot was a, quite a long process to develop that design. Right now it is a pilot and I also know that the work in the parking lot in Nealon Park is not yet complete in terms of some updates to the striping that may accommodate more spots. So like I said, we have to be careful about what we discuss, but that's information available to the public through the Middle Avenue Project website, I believe. So with that, thank you again for all of your public comments. And at this time, we are going to move on with our agenda to section E, which is our presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have three proclamations. And City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on proclamations E1, E2, and E3?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamations, item E1, Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, E2, National Native American Heritage Month, or E3, United Against Hate Week. If you're participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our proclamations, items E1 through E3. No hands and no cards. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. All right, our first proclamation is E1 and it is for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. Ruby Bridges is an icon of the American Civil Rights Movement, who at age six years old in 1960 was the lone student escorted by four federal, federal agents while bravely walking amongst protesters to integrate William France Elementary School in New Orleans. In 2018, a group of fifth graders in the South San Francisco Unified School District were so inspired by Ruby's courage that they advocated to make November 14th Ruby Bridges Day. With the help of the San Mateo County Office of Education, their dream became a reality. And then in 2021, the California State Senate passed a resolution proclaiming November 14th as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. So we hope you will join the Menlo Park community on Monday, November 14th and walk together and discuss with one another how Ruby's action back in 1960 is still relevant and how the work for justice and equity continues today. And I am really excited to welcome Teresa Vellas Kelly from the Safe Routes to School Program from the County Office of, San Mateo County Office of Education to accept this proclamation. And Ms. Vellas Kelly was instrumental in not only getting this day established in our county, but she's also working across the country to further get this day recognized by other communities as well. So good evening, Ms. Vellas Kelly. It's nice to see you here.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison and members of city council. I really appreciate you doing this every year that you have a proclamation for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. As you all know, it happened 63 years ago when Ruby, six-year-old Ruby Bridges just desegregated her elementary school. And I've heard her speak and she shared that she really didn't understand the significance of this action, but as you all know, it had a huge ripple effect and it helped forward the civil rights movement. And then as Mayor Wallison shared, 58 years later, there were some fifth graders in South San Francisco Unified that learned about her and really wanted to honor her courage with a day, November 14th, in their district. And their dream was to make this nationwide. Our Safe Routes to School team helped them make it into a Walk to School Day. We reached out to our Safe Routes to School counterparts across the Bay Area and across the country. And eventually, as you know, it, it has become a national movement. And Ruby Bridges herself restarted her foundation and made this a centerpiece of her foundation's work and one of the initiatives that they work on. And AAA has been instrumental in really helping to forward this movement as well. And I'm at the California, I'm not there in person with you because, because I'm at the California Traffic Safety Summit right now. And I just talked to someone today from Southern California AAA, because I didn't realize AAA is, it's a national organization, but they have different regions. So our NorCal AAA is the one that has really forwarded this among all of the, their seven state region. Southern California has also been working on it with all of their schools that they work with. And I know other AAA's across the country have been involved as well. So it's really exciting because it's really taken off and it's not just one person or one organization, it's been everybody working together that has really helped forward this movement. And I just want to say that the city of Menlo Park and Menlo Park Schools have really helped advance this because every year you promote and participate in the Walk to School Day. So I really appreciate this and thank you for recognizing this important day and the courage of a six-year-old and her parents really, because they did know the significance of this action and they had the foresight to allow their daughter to take this important step. And I think it really shows that even our youngest citizens with support can make a huge difference. So thank you very much and I hope to see you all out there walking on November 14th.
Thank you, Ms. Vellas Kelly. Such a wonderful message and it's wonderful to see live on and spread throughout our country. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting me.
Okay. Our next proclamation is for National Native American Heritage Month. Native American Heritage Month is observed in November to call attention to the culture, traditions, and achievements of the nation's original inhabitants and their descendants. This gives us an opportunity to become more educated about Native Americans, increase our knowledge of unique challenges faced by this population, and better understand how historical trauma such as colonization and genocide has impacted Native peoples. The Alonee, a band of distinct groups of indigenous people who spoke similar languages, thrived in San Mateo County, and have lost the vast majority of their population and land. National Native American Heritage Month provides San Mateo County residents the opportunity for students to learn about the Alonee people, their role in the history of the county and the Bay Area, and their efforts to keep their culture alive. And we hope that you can learn more and that you'll join us about the impacts that Native American cultures have had on the United States by joining us at the Menlo Park Library on Wednesday, November 29th at 6:30 PM for a recognition of Native American Heritage Month. Our final presentation this evening is for United Against Hate Week. United Against Hate Week is November 12th through the 18th and is a call for local civic action to stop the hate and implicit biases that are a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our neighborhoods, towns, and cities. The United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity and the Constitution shines equality for all individuals regardless of race, gender, sexuality, religion, or political views. United Against Hate Week was created in direct response to the sharp rise in expressions of hate in our communities and to empower local residents to take action and alter the course of growing intolerance. Since inception, United Against Hate Week has spread to over 100-plus communities, LGBTQ+ and human rights organizations, and is beginning to take off throughout California and in communities across the United States. And on Monday, November 13th, at the Menlo Park and Bellhaven Branch Library, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, there will be a United Against Hate game-in where community members are invited to enjoy one another's company and play games with neighbors. Once we get to know each other, it's hard to hate each other. So we encourage you to take advantage of these events. We have a lot of wonderful ones coming up for Ruby Bridges, for Native American Heritage, and for United Against Hate. So we appreciate being part of such a caring community. Did any members of the city council wish to comment? Okay. All right. With that, we are moving on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, you had mentioned earlier that there was an update to F1. Can you please provide that to us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. I wanted to provide members of the public in the city council an update to the exhibit in the resolution for the Conflict of Interest Code. That should have been provided in a red line. It has been provided this evening in a red line, so it is clear what positions are being added and removed. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to call for public comment on the consent calendar, please?
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on our consent calendar items, F1, adopt a resolution updating the city's Conflict of Interest Code. F2, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance to add Section 16.04.296 and amend 16.04.120, 16.04.313, 16.04.320, 16.04.325, 16.18.030, 16.20.030. sixteen point two zero point zero three zero, sixteen point six zero point zero one zero, sixteen point seven two point zero one zero, and sixteen point eight zero point zero three zero, subtitle sixteen of the Menlo Park Municipal Code to allow electrification equipment in existing covered parking spaces and to allow exterior closures for electrification equipment within the required side and rear setbacks for the existing residential dwelling units. And item F three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute documents necessary for the acquisition of five zero nine Sandalwood Street in Menlo Park and take necessary actions to consummate the sale of the property to the city and approve appropriations of the below-market-rate housing funds not to exceed four hundred and one four hundred and four and one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars to purchase the property for the below-market-rate housing program. Please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card and return to me at the clerk's desk. Final call for public comment on our consent calendar items F one through F three. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Um so I do want to point out that um we're doing things a little differently and I I might have um not clarified this. We are for council members who wish to pull or modify an item um on the consent, we will be discussing those after G two. Um so um I, Councilmember Dora, did you want to um? I know you had motioned to me that you wanted to speak on one of these.
Um I I will change my mind, I think, on this one. We can we can move forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um all right, we then uh is there a if we um City Clerk Karen, can we use our electronic voting even though there's four of us here?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be voting by vote cast. Um so it looks like can those that motioned and seconded, please orally state that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Nash to approve the consent calendar. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with City Councilmember Combs absent.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. All right, we are now moving on to our study sessions. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. The first study session item this evening is G one. Provide direction regarding operational expenditures and potential revenue sources to support Menlo Park Community Campus opening and ongoing operations. And here to introduce this item is our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt. Mr. Reinhardt, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So the um purpose of tonight's study session is uh for City Council to provide direction to staff for the Menlo Park Community Campus operating budget. We have a nice rendering here of the exterior of the building. I I note the comment earlier to get some photos of the construction in progress, so we'll work on that. And the recommendation tonight is again to provide that direction specifically regarding operational expenditures and potential revenue sources for opening and operating the new facility. Um the budget scenarios and requests and recommendations of place before City Council really are have their basis in a robust community engagement and City Council discussion process around programs and services in the new facility. Uh which you see summarized on this slide are some of the key City Council touchpoints, although there have been others with advisory bodies and community focus groups. Just to quickly summarize the service needs in the new facility, this is a large, complex, multi-service public facility, thirty-seven thousand plus square feet on two levels. It will incorporate some programs that are currently operating, such as the Senior Center, Youth Center, and Branch Library. Those are in other locations. They'll move into the new facility. Um also, the new facility will restore services that were suspended or substantially reduced during construction, services in the Bell Haven neighborhood, that is. Um the new facility also will expand some current services um to uh it to fulfill the vision of the City Council and community for what the service, the facility will do to serve the community, also to support new desire programs in the facility which don't currently exist. Also, it's uh should be noted that new public facilities of this type commonly experience significant increases in usage compared to the old facilities they replace. Few other just notes about uh this project, the former community center's closure that's on the site where the new one's being built. On that closure coincided with the COVID nineteen pandemic, which resulted in some widespread facility closures and personnel reductions made necessary by that economic downturn that accompanied the pandemic. Um the Library and Community Services Department staffing capacity has not fully recovered from those reductions yet. Meanwhile, uh services that were closed during the pandemic at the Burgess Campus have been restored. Um additional staff capacity is recommended to safely and effectively deliver services at the new center, assuming that the service levels are to be comparable or equivalent between the Burgess Campus and the Menlo Park Community Campus. A couple of notes about the timeline that we're dealing with here. Um there are currently no expenditures or revenues allocated in the city budget to open and operate the new facility. Assuming no unforeseen construction delays at this point in time, the issuance of the Temporary Certificate of Occupancy, or TCO, for the new facility is tentatively anticipated to happen during the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. City staff estimates that then opening the new facility to the public will occur approximately sixty to ninety days after the issuance of that TCO. Uh furthermore, city staff estimates that a lead time uh of three to six months is currently needed to prepare, recruit, hire, onboard, and train new or restored staff positions. With that timeline, it's critically important to confirm the operating budget and staffing levels for the new center at the earliest opportunity. Another shot, this is of the front of the facility. Um just quickly, an overview of of current service levels. The Department Library and Community Services Staff, they're currently working at maximum capacity to meet current service demands. Again, there are fewer full-time equivalent staff now than there were before the pandemic. Services that were reduced during the pandemic have since been restored, except for services of some services in the Bell Haven neighborhood that were paused during construction. Um the department has adapted to these reduced service levels in part because that major facility has been closed in the Bell Haven neighborhood, but also by implementing efficiency measures and through an increased use of temporary and hourly staffing. There are a number of other personnel considerations that are um outlined in some detail in the staff report. Um you can see they're summarized here on the screen. Uh to spend a brief few minutes talking about each um related to current staffing, potential new or restored staffing, a new job assignments. Again, the team members who are currently working in the Senior Center and the Youth Center, um they're in interim locations. They will move back into the new facility um when it opens, so we're not really focused on, you know, that area. It's kind of already operating. Um some team members who worked in the previous Onetta Harris Community Center, in particular around like the gymnasium and the recreation center. Um some, they are still employed by the city. They've been backfilling vacancies on the Burgess Campus. Um they um may um opt to request a transfer back to the new campus. It's anticipated that some likely will want to do that, uh which is great. Um it's also anticipated that there could be, depending on City Council's direction to um staff around staffing the new facility, there could be some opportunities for new hires directly to the new campus and also potentially some job opportunities to backfill for the team members who may transfer over to the new campus. So that's kind of on current staffing. On recruitments and advancements, um the city and the Library and Community Services Department really emphasize the importance of training and developing current employees for career advancement in the city. We've had numerous recent promotions from within the ranks, all of whom achieved promotions through open competitive recruitments. And that's important because we also emphasize hiring qualified job seekers from the local community whenever possible. We post all of our job opportunities on the website as open competitive opportunities. Many of our current department employees are current or former Menlo Park residents who first gained their employment with the city through that recruitment process. Um several of even promoted to leadership positions quite recently. Um again, all the job opportunities are posted on the city's job page. Um then moving on to contract instructors, this is another really key element of our service um delivery plan. Now, these are folks who teach like recreation classes, arts and crafts um eh in the Burgess Campus and it will be in the new facility. These are not city employees. They are independent contractors. Um they receive compensation for the services through like a contract with the city. Um we recruit for these instructors on an ongoing basis. There's a a place on the city website where instructors can express their interests and then we review those um seasonally. Um we also anticipate doing a more focused recruiting um for contract instructors in the new facility, probably in the first quarter of next year as we in the run-up to the new facility. Um there's also some discussion in the staff report around on the vacancy rate. Um the Library and Community Services Department, like the city overall, is challenged by a higher-than-desired vacancy rate. The departments, um that's the percentage of authorized full-time equivalent personnel that do not have a permanently appointed incumbent employee in that spot. Um the department's current vacancy rate is over twelve percent. And um as of earlier this week, the citywide vacancy rate is uh around seventeen percent. So definitely higher than desired. Uh the desired vacancy rate would be less than four or five percent. Um to maintain and meet service expectations, those staffing shortfalls are are temporarily backfilled or they're otherwise managed through provisional appointments or acting assignments. Um they are managed by increasing the use of temporary or hourly personnel. There's some limits to to that. Um they're also by delaying lower priority or long-range projects. Um you know, temporarily, those are helpful in the short term, not sustainable in the long term. The city has made extensive efforts to fill vacancies and there's been some progress in this area. However, that elevated rate is um a persistent and ongoing challenge. Um the scenario is presented here tonight actually assume no vacancy rate, but did want to spend just a few minutes to talk about that. It's a significant personnel consideration that we're dealing with presently, probably for the uh near future at least. Um for reference, here is a summary organizational chart. I won't spend a lot of time on this. It's outlined in the report, but it's here in case needed. Um a couple more shots of the interior of the building. These are renderings of the Maker Space, the Children's Library on the first floor. A very exciting to see it come to fruition after all the effort by the community and the City Council to make it happen. Um so just turning to the the main topic for tonight that staff is seeking direction from the City Council about, and that um is the expenditure scenarios uh for the new facility um to aid City Council's deliberations. The City Staff has prepared three expenditure scenarios to consider and to compare. Um in all three of these scenarios, the operating expenses expenses and revenues are presented to represent like a full year of operations. Now that said, it's anticipated that operations at the new facility will begin more than halfway through the fiscal year, so it's just important to keep that in mind. Uh but our standard practice um i- is to show what a full year would would look like. So here is a side-by-side comparison of the three scenarios. I'll go into each briefly here, but it's here for reference um during the discussion. So let's see, the first scenario, here is the recommended scenario. This would include approximately one point oh two one million dollars in non-personnel operating expenses. Uh principally nine hundred sixty-six thousand in personnel expenses, which would include six point oh full-time equivalent new or restored personnel in addition to approximately fifty-seven hundred hours of temporary or hourly staff capacity um with offsetting projected revenues. This is a real rough estimate. We won't know specific numbers till the building opens, but projected revenues of approximately seven hundred fifteen thousand, primarily from user fees. Um this is recommended to open and operate the new center in the manner envisioned by the City Council and the community without reducing services in other locations. Um for example, this would be to restore those community programs that were suspended or reduced in the Bell Haven neighborhood during construction. Uh this also would be to staff an expanded public library space that spans two floors of the facility instead of the current one-floor facility to support new services designed in the facility that currently don't exist, such as the Maker Space and the Teen Zone. Also, to create a new job classification to support enhanced nutrition services for senior center and youth center participants. And um also, and this one is the case for all three scenarios, to reinstate the overhead and operating costs for um operating a thirty-seven thousand square foot facility such as utilities and supplies and services. So that's um scenario one, and you can see the summary on the screen here. Uh moving to scenario two, this is an alternative scenario. Um it includes approximately nine hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars in non-personnel operating expenses, um five hundred eighty-two thousand dollars in personnel expenses, including three point oh full-time equivalent personnel and um slightly more temporary hourly staff capacity, about seventy-five hundred hours um with offsetting projected revenues still projected at seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Again, that's a rough estimate. Um this alternative scenario is focused on the most critically important needs for providing core services and open hours at the new facility in a manner that's equivalent or comparable to the service levels and hours at the Burgess Campus facilities, where there'd be some service model changes. This alternative scenario relies more heavily on temporary hourly personnel to provide ongoing core services. And it focuses the new or restored full-time equivalent personnel on job classifications that have the ability to supervise and lead frontline staff, including the temporary and hourly. Um this scenario would also result in some service model changes focused on gaining efficiencies in multiple areas in order to absorb the new service demands presented by the new facility, and those are outlined in the staff report. Um and I won't mention them here, but happy to discuss them further. Just in the interest of time, I'll move on to scenario three, which is um not recommended by staff. This expenditure scenario includes approximately nine hundred eighteen thousand in those non-personnel operating expenses. It um includes a hundred and fifty-six thousand in personnel expenses for temporary and hourly staff offset by um those projected revenues. Implementing this scenario would involve opening the new facility essentially with current staffing levels. And it would redirect some staff capacity that's currently being used to support services and programs on the Burgess Campus over to the NPCC facility. Um the scenario is not recommended because of the community impacts to services at city libraries and recreation facilities at both locations, you know, that would result from that. Um so if if City Council directs staff to pursue this scenario, um the city staff would prepare options for potential service level reductions at the Burgess Campus facilities for City Council to review at a future meeting tentatively in uh December. So I'm just looking at the impact on city resources of these various scenarios. Um the city's re uh excuse me, as the City Council well knows, the city's general fund resources are finite. There is some economic uncertainty in the city's long-term forecast. Um the city's economic circumstances are critically important factors in the City Council's decision-making related to resource allocations, including these. Um staff is working on an update to the city's master fee schedule with a goal of bringing it to the City Council for consideration next month. Um one potential non-general fund source that could be applied toward the NPCC operating expenditures is the one-time developer payments special revenue fund or Fund One One One, which is discussed in a little more detail in the staff report and happy to discuss that further. Um so I think we're closing out here. Uh next steps, again, there are currently no expenditures or revenues allocated in the budget for the new facility as of yet. City Council may direct staff to implement any one of the above um scenarios as presented or to modify a scenario before implementation. Um in any event, after receiving direction from City Council tonight, city staff will prepare the directed resource allocations for action by City Council, uh likely to include resolutions to amend the city operating budget and salary reschedule, and we are likely to include resolutions to amend the city operating budget and salary reschedule, and we are looking tentatively doing that in December. That concludes the presentation and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for that presentation. I think at this point, we will open it up for a public comment. So City Clerk Karen, can you please call for a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our first study session item G1, provide direction regarding operational expenditures and potential revenue sources to support Memo Park Community Campus opening and ongoing operations. If you are participating virtually, now's the time to engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This time I have two speakers and this will be the final call for public comment on study session item G1. Okay, I have a total of four speakers with our final speaker being Adina Levin. And our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, council. I want to echo a prior speaker who thanked you for your service. I thank you too, and I think it often takes a lot of courage to come here, and I know it takes a lot of time to read the documents. So I wear many hats, I was a former library commissioner, I'm currently serving on the Finance and Audit Committee. I've been engaged resident for years, and I also have a particular interest in disaster preparedness and also good government, or efficient government would be a good way to put it. And I'm following up to a memo that I sent in on this topic. And I know the city has plans to hire a senior emergency level person, but the person isn't yet here, and I actually think we need more than one person to do the work that's involved. We're experiencing blue skies right now, but we, you know, we know that gray skies are likely to come in our lifetime and we are not prepared. And as we heard at the community meeting that I'm, a group that I'm with, seismologists expect the big one to occur. We're overdue for a major earthquake. And people have come before the council since at least 2005 and given periodic updates and recommendations, including to have the form of a disaster preparedness commissioner committee where all parts can work together to share information in kind of a whole of community way. So they have an example of that in Portola Valley and Woodside, and we need an open forum where people do work outside of the meeting and they come together and report on it. So I'm kind of troubled, I am troubled, but I want to remain positive and say, I think we need that person more than more people in the community services and library, though I recognize that's important too. But, you know, we're talking about public safety. So in terms of the topic before us, I have a few suggestions and questions. One of them, how is the library foundation involved in raising money and the friends? And is it possible that some of the programming and the staffing could come from, let's say, let's call it a pilot? We have a group right now very active out in Bellhaven, they have monthly meetings, I attend when I can. My assess, my perspective is we probably have more people involved than there is work. And I think that group would willingly take on a project, maybe one day a week. Let's help with the staffing, let's help with the programming. You might have a whole slew of fresh ideas that you wouldn't otherwise if 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 this was more of a partnership with the library as a pilot, perhaps one day a week. And there are other organizations that are run almost entirely by volunteers. St. Anthony's Padua Dining Room is one, they serve roughly 300-400 hot meals six days of the week, and they have very few paid staff. My time's up. Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. Sorry.
All right, our next speaker will be Pam D. Jones, filed, followed by Nico Harris-Parker.
All the same introduction that I said before. I'm looking at this deficit and I realize that there's some of you council members, and I say it that way for a reason, want to reinstate the UUT tax. And keep in mind that people, there's a lot of people in this city that are on fixed incomes. The county wants to raise taxes, the Ravenswood City School District is probably trying to raise taxes. Now the city. Anyway, I think it would have been really helpful to have a comparison of the previous hours to the hours of operation now, because I wasn't able to find any hours of operation. So it was hard to to assess what staff was really needed, because if you don't know the hours, you don't know what you need. One of the things that I grew up with, a saying that I grew up with, that we as African-Americans were the first hired, the last hired, and the first fired. And so I want to ensure that residents from the community are the first hires and then we follow by the rest of Menlo Park. Now, that's going to mean that we need to have a very friendly friendly user application process, it's, you probably have to go three deep in order to find what you're looking for. It's not bilingual, the first page is, but nothing else is bilingual. So we're saying to a whole group of people, we're really not interested in having you there unless you speak and read perfect English. Also, in regards to part-time, have we, have we thought creatively and said, okay, this person that that works in the morning with the seniors, the other half of their job will be in the afternoon or evening and they'll be working in the library or they'll be working in the Maker Space, you know? I couldn't quite put pieces together because like I said, I didn't know the hours. But I'm sure that we can be creative about how we do the staffing and that will not be as expensive as the two that are, that we've been given, because it would, to me, it just screams, oh, we got to raise taxes or we have to raise the fees for the people that are going to use the facilities. And both of those, in my mind, are unacceptable. So, uh, let's see, I had some other things on here. Nope, I guess that's it. So when I get the information on the hours of operation, I will be making more comments. This is the kind of work I retired from doing, which is why that I'm looking at it, you know, taking a deep dive into it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nico Harris-Parker, followed by Adina Levin.
Yes, hello, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I want to thank staff for their presentation. I was able to do the tour of the new facilities, longtime resident of Bellhaven. And I was very pleased with what I saw. The building looks great. I was happy to hear when I was doing the tour that staff who was currently providing services for Bellhaven community would be coming back to fulfill those roles. That I'm very, very happy with. In addition to those comments, I want to say I appreciate the comments of the two previous speakers. I agree with what they both had to say in terms of, yes, the city does need an emergency services position. I, that's something that needs to happen. And in terms of the staffing, I agree that Bellhaven residents should be first and foremost to be able to apply for those jobs. I support scenario one, and I support scenario one with city council deciding to use the Fund 111 funds to get this process going. I do not believe that it is smart business to have a facility built and underfund services to the community. I believe that city council needs to find a way to provide full services to Bellhaven community for the building that has been built for this community. And I appreciate Sean and his staff arranging for the tours. I think more word needs to get out because a lot of residents still aren't aware that they can do tours. But I do look forward to having some more information. I agree with Ms. Jones on being able to have a little bit more information on the timing and being able to understand a little bit more of the different positions that could rotate. As a person who does hold many hats, I enjoy that, but we have to be aware that not all staff members are going to be ready for that. So I think there is some more work that needs to be done in providing a little bit more information to the public and to city council regarding this, but so far I want to say that I appreciate the fact that the process is moving forward. Thank you.
And our final speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, city council members, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. I want to echo what a couple of the speakers have talked about in terms of having, pardon me, there's a train going by, you know, to the, to the extent that it is legal to have a preference for hiring local people. When there were budget cuts because of the pandemic, you know, there were some beloved local people who worked in in Bellhaven who lost their jobs. And, you know, this is something where community members are well positioned to understand the needs of their fellow residents and having the application process be Spanish-friendly is something that will help attract more local residents. Also, remembering some of the discussion and debate in the community about where to invest in, you know, new library and community services facilities. I'm really glad that we have a beautiful facility opening up in Bellhaven and encourage decisions that will ensure that there are first-class services in Bellhaven that are comparable to anything else we have in the rest of the city. Thank you very much.
And that concludes our cards and raised hands for item G1. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to all of our public speakers. I'd now like to turn it over to my colleagues for their thoughts on everything we've heard and read about the opening of this new center and where we go from here. Yes, we'll begin with Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, and I think it's really exciting to be at this stage. I do have a question about the revenue that you're anticipating, the $715,000. If you can make, just tell us a little bit more about that. Who will be using, you know, who you see that coming from, the, thank you.
Thank you, great question. So the revenue projections are just that, they're projections, they're intended to be rough order of magnitude estimates. There are so many variables and unknowns until the new facility actually opens, so. But we're confident that as a rough order of magnitude, this is around the revenues that we're projecting for a full year of operations. They were based on current and past revenues, current revenues from of corresponding programs at the Burgess campus and also looking at the past revenues at the previous center. So they were calculated using that as a basis. They include recreation fees, they include rental income, some reimbursement revenue and donations, the donations are primarily ongoing from like the friends of the library. They're modest in nature, but they're ongoing. Let's see. The revenue projection is consistent across the three scenarios presented in part because they are rough order of magnitude estimates. And also, there was the assumption that cost recovery and revenue generation would remain a core function in all three scenarios. I do want to take a moment to say that there has not been a direction from the city council to increase user fees. And in fact, some of the direction that we have received from city council in the past on this topic has been to find ways to make the facility more accessible to residents, to remove barriers, in particular for neighborhood residents. So the upcoming master fee schedule update will reflect that direction. There is no plan currently to increase user fees.
Thank you, you just hit on exactly where I was going with it. Two things that we've heard very clearly, both in city council meetings and also in subcommittee meetings with the resident working group is, first of all, that it is accessible to everyone, that the fees for residents are, it makes the place accessible, that they are not in any way prohibitive. So I want to make sure that we're not counting on fees there. The other message that we've heard loud and clear is that the community space should be for the residents and there's been some concern that we don't rent it out to other groups and so that it's not accessed, not available to the residents. So that's sort of the push-pull with it's good to be getting revenue in, but very concerned that we are keeping the place for our residents. First of all, Bellhaven District 1 and citywide, front and foremost in our mind. Thank you.
So following up on that, what were the assumptions? I guess I'm still a little confused because we haven't done the master fee schedule and cost recovery. We haven't seen what the cost recovery is going to look like for this. So does the projected revenue assumption assume keeping it accessible for everyone and not doing major rentals? Or what are, how did you build that out with that, with those variables?
Thank you for the questions. So again, the projections were formulated primarily by looking at current and past revenue levels and making reasonable adjustments for, you know, the new facility. They do not necessarily get into like that level of granular detail about potential proposed updates to the master fee schedule. I will say that the direction that we have heard from a number of avenues, including the city council, to really look at who which groups have access to rent, to use the facility, like the community spaces has been heard loud and clear. One thing about like user fees and rental fees, on the one hand, if you're not careful, they can become a barrier for users because of the affordability issue. But they also can be used to prioritize and incentivize or de-incentivize user groups accordingly. For example, the city standard practices to charge residents one rate for certain fees and non-residents typically a higher rate. And we'd heard some guidance to consider additional premiums on say like commercial or corporate renters. And so we're working on that as part of the master fee schedule. I know that's not the topic of tonight's discussion, but just to kind of respond to your question about how these revenue projections were formulated, they are not quite to that that phase yet.
And can you remind us when the master fee schedule, when when will we be talking about that?
I think currently the tentative timeline is to bring it to city council next month. However, I think that's still subject to a couple of sort of legal reviews and some other things that kind of need to happen first, but that's what we're shooting for.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor, did you?
Yes, just a follow-up question, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, on the same topic. So are these the estimated revenues for both facilities potential? So that's all the facilities in the city, or is it just the new community center?
Great question, thank you for asking. So everything presented in these scenarios is specific to the new Menlo Park Community Campus 100 Terminal Avenue Center.
So does that mean that the Burgess campus is ran specifically on its own revenues? So if you're looking at each facility?
Well, we do track revenues as they're received at different locations. I wouldn't say that the Burgess campus is run on the revenues, right? The revenues are just come into the city's general fund and they offset expenses. We do keep track of them.
Okay.
But they're not necessarily tied to the operation like that.
I think what would be helpful is to have information what the the revenues were or what it took to run the previous center. To me, there's not enough information, having a number like $715,000, to me, needs to be broken down, how much of it is donation? To me, there's not enough information. Having a number like $715,000, to me, needs to be broken down. How much of it is donations? How much of it is user fees? Just have some more detail to really understand um how you got that number. And I know it's an estimate. Um, and Councilmember Door.
Yes, actually, building off of that, um, I appreciate Vice Mayor that you brought up Burgess. Because I was looking at this and I thought to myself, okay, how do these numbers for the new community center compare to the proposed personnel and service levels that are presented here in these scenarios? And so I would really like to see a side-by-side here because we talk about wanting to make sure that we are equitably distributing resources and services to all of our community. And so having that side-by-side would would help for this conversation.
Thank you. Just just to clarify, the side-by-side you're referring to would be the Burgess campus expenditures and revenues and compare that to?
We're thinking about the libraries that are both spaces, the recreation centers and pools that are in both spaces. Um, obviously, there are differences in the this uh the physical sizes of the spaces, but I I think trying to draw comparisons where we can to make sure that the the personnel that we're posing here across both and the services we're looking at for both um are equitable.
Understood. It should be fairly easy to um to refer to the city's current operating budget and the operating budget for the past couple of years. Because the amount, the previous campus has been offline. So like the recreation sports expenditures and revenues really only derive from the Burgess campus. So should be fair fairly straightforward to get that information.
One one additional question, and the information of what it costs prior to COVID. What the operating budget was for each program that will be located in the new facility? So that's the comparison that I'm interested in. And and I know that the hours, that's the other question, is the hours of operation will be different. Prior, it was 40 hours a week. Now, I don't know what the new potential operating hours will be, but I think that will obviously will increase the cost as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just just on the operating hours, because that's been mentioned a couple of times. So these um scenarios, or at least the the first two are based on the assumption and direction that the hours at the new facility would be equivalent or comparable to the hours at the corresponding Burgess campus facilities. So um, and the hours at the Burgess campus facilities are roughly equivalent now to what they were pre-pandemic. Um, so for example, um, the libraries are open seven days per week, approximately 56 hours per week. The recreation center and gymnasium similarly open seven days per week. The hours can vary a little bit, but it's between 55 and 60 hours per week. So the assumption is that in the new center um that those would be the the operating hours. Um, they um maybe a little bit more than they were in the previous center. Um, but that that's what the the premise here for these scenarios is.
Um, following up sort of in the same vein, um, I'm curious what the projected um visitor numbers are. Or I know it's a little apples and oranges because the the two community campuses aren't totally the same. But I'm just thinking about how many people that the the new center is anticipated to serve. Maybe by program, maybe just kind of how many visits per day are we anticipating versus that like Burgess campus? Um, just to get a sense, because I am thinking with resource allocation and everything, Burgess tends to serve, you know, citywide. And I think I'm thinking is the, are we also looking to have the new center? I know where the priority is on the Bell Haven community. But is that just how we're thinking about all the different metrics about this?
Um, when it comes to like certainly looking at at the metrics past and current and projecting them as far as like how much is the facility being used? Do we expect it to be used and in which programs? Um, is 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 important. Um, visitor numbers um are are one such metric. Um, a a visit to one program might be a little bit different as far as like how it might affect expenditures than like in other programs. So it starts to get a little complex to like really look at it through that lens. Um, but with that caveat, we we certainly can, you know, provide some additional detail about that.
Another question I had is uh looking at this agenda item, um, the one resource, revenue source or fund source that was listed here, it was Fund 111. Um, and it, I'm curious about the the sustainability of that s- s- funding source. And so right now, it sounds like there is um 2.8 million and 1.5 is expected uh in the current fiscal year. Um, how does it look into the future? Because we want to make sure that you know, the consensus that we have are are matching the expected uh revenue here of this bucket that is being recommended from from the department.
Excellent question. I'm I'm not the in-house expert on the the details of Fund 111. I will say that um my understanding is that there is a current balance there that is unencumbered, that is substantial enough to offset um a a significant portion of operations in the initial years, should City Council choose to do that. Um, they're not evergreen forever. Some of them are tied to development agreements that actually do have a recurring kind of payment annually for um many years. Others, um, the timeframe is a bit shorter. Um, if there's additional detail needed, I would I would kind of look to maybe others in the city who have more in-depth knowledge, but that's kind of the 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 short summary of it.
Thank you. I am curious about the longevity of this fund because we want to make sure that we don't, you know, hire on folks for two or three years and then have to have a conversation about cutting staff. That's the last thing I'd hope for, given the important resource of this community center. And so I'm I'm curious if there is any more detail that could be provided now or later about that fund.
Uh, let's see, I can just ta- talk a a little bit about it, uh, but I I would say it it I would be curious to hear from the the council if it wanted to even consider using the fund. So assuming that there is a desire to uh use the fund, um, there's the uh two numbers that were identified in the staff report, which was what the current balance was and the most most recent payment. And so um even if that um uh the request here would not be to to fully uh deplete those funds, so that 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 there there'd be multiple years worth of potential funding with that. As was stated, there's uh multiple development agreements with various timeframes. The largest one by far is approximately a million dollars a year. Um, it's not, I would say it's evergreen, but it is for a pretty long uh timeframe. I would say if the council does want to uh consider the use of the funds, I think it's important to focus in on kind of the startup. There there's a lot of unknowns associated with um upcoming uh financial situations. I think that 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 use of the fund would be um would kind of get the new facility off on the right foot, but uh with so many things, we're going to need to kind of check back in every few years on the overall uh city finances. So I think it's uh uh creates pretty good uh stability for five-plus years for sure. Um, anything beyond five years, this this day and age, uh, we know that we need to re- revisit things. So I feel very confident about it, providing that uh stability for five, five years.
And City Manager Murphy, can you provide a description of what Fund 111 was established for? Like what, what is the intention of use of those funds?
Uh, let's see. So the, in terms of the uh ultimate uh use of the funds, that has not been fully documented. We're in the process of uh, you know, researching that some more. We'll come back to the City Council as part of that to be able to memorialize it, because there has been some other uh other funds for which the council has like adopted a resolution that explicitly states what what the funding can be used for. But source of these funds uh had been co-mingled with the general fund, so they date from three uh development agreements uh all uh associated with the meta. It there um uh all all near each other, kind of near the intersection of uh Willow Road and Bayfront Express Place, all north of of 101. First one started in about the 2021 timeframe, and that's the largest one, the one that's approximately a million dollars. And um uh the original um uh explanation in the development agreements were uh kind of in lieu of sales tax because previous um occupants of a of a sites on microsystems generated sales tax. So that's kind of the original origin of it. And then about three years ago or so, the the fund uh was established to kind of no longer commingle it with the general fund, so it could be um I'd say focused more on the geography of where the revenue is located, and so it could be um more associated with where potential expenditures could be. So that's where I think we do have a case of a uh facility that's near the source of of the revenue. Um, so I think in general, the the idea would be that the money is uh targeted towards the north of 101 area. Again, since it's kind of general fund, it's in in a way, there it's fungible. Um, but I I think this this is a potential candidate for um making sure that there's um kind of a a dedicated and secure, stable uh source of revenue to ensure certain level of um level of service.
Thank you. Any other questions along the lines we've been going on? Please, Councilmember, uh Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. And um considering that we will be talking more in depthly about the the user fees, um, the Fund 111. Um, I'd be interested in to make sure that the the building is sustainable um for at least five years. Having a significant portion of the annual operating costs come from 111. I'd be supportive of that.
Just to clarify, you are supportive of using 111 for this purpose?
That is the way to make the the operating of the new facility sustainable? Yes.
Thank you. I guess just following up on that, and that's good to know, and I I think I am too, um, but I want to just ask the question. If we don't use Fund 111, this is also for the public. How are we going to pay for any of these scenarios, let alone the the highest price tag scenario? So I guess that's a question for the city manager, but um we're already looking at structural deficit. Are there any other creative sources of funds to pay for this?
Uh, let's see. So it um uh so there's one question about whether there is any other uh fund, and that's a fund with a capital F, because the city has 50, 50-plus funds. We um we, from a staff perspective, have not identified another eligible fund um for that. So it, again, we're totally open to uh suggestions, ideas. We're happy to kind of um check, cross-check in that. So we're we're not aware of any other um uh fund with the capital F. So that mainly uh comes to the city's then general fund. The main source of 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 general fund is a property tax, transient occupancy tax. Um, uh there was one, one mention of utility user tax, which for just, again, for people's um benefit, uh, the city had been collecting utility users' tax. Um, well, not, we are no longer collecting utility users' tax. Uh, we will be needing to refund previous utility user tax uh payments. And so that's, that's um uh, subject of its own kind of discussion, but that's um, there's kind of a two parts to that, no longer having a revenue stream from it and a need to repay over $5 million of of fees. So that's a kind of a double issue there. Um, so then the 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 last sort of um uh revenue option is um user fees, and that's where, again, we're trying to strike that balance of making sure that the the um, I I believe there is a need to kind of charge some some level of fee, because when there's a a uh a a limited resource, it it helps to kind of understand that. But as has been discussed, trying to make it as accessible as possible. So that's where um um the availability of that Fund 111 might um help strike that proper balance. And that's where we will need a little bit of uh iteration, a little trial and error to kind of write um, find the that right balance point over the next uh next few years. Um, yeah, there's, there's, uh, we're not aware of, as has been stated previously, there might be opportunity for, you know, volunteers, other donations. There's already been a number of donations come in for the um construction of the facility, the finishing of the facility. Um, but in going forward, there's opportunity of people power and other other donations. Those are all things that can be explored in the coming years. Um, we want to kind of get things off on the right foot with the opening of the facility.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Um, so I guess now for my colleagues, um, given that there's really no other option, I've had a fund this, so it gets off to that good start and has at least runway of that five-year. Um, it sounds like Vice Mayor Taylor's in support of using Fund 111. I'm in support of it. Just wanted to to see the temperature of the rest of you. I'm seeing nods from both Councilmembers Door and Nash. So I think that's a a good um place to start as we then move into um how much we want to invest in this um going forward. So um Councilmember Nash, I know you had started with some questions, and then we all kind of piggybacked off those. I wanted to return to you to see um whether questions you have or if you wanted to continue on from here.
So first of all, as I stated before, I'm extremely excited about this facility. And of course, all of us want it to be successful and a welcoming expansive place um with robust programming. I think one of the things that has happened um since we first started this um adventure is that our city finances have changed. And so it just to make note that that's one of the reasons um why we are going through this exercise right now. Um so as the City Council, um, as you're hearing, we are reviewing this um trying to balance the budget considerations, the economic uncertainty, um, along with this fabulous new center that um we will be opening hopefully early next year. I guess the first place that I want to, um, well, I also want to recognize that staff is working extra hard, and um not only do we have heard working staff, they are compensating for many vacancies that some of which are, um, we do have temps or other people working to supplement um the vacancies. But currently, um, as was stated in the report, um, we do have a high number of vacancies. So one of the things that um I am trying to, what that I'm grappling with is how if, once we are fully staffed, how does that play with the number of new staff members that we need? And um basically, right now, where did I have this? Um here it is. So right, currently, there is 66.25 staff members in the library and community services. There are 8.25 vacancies, which is a high number of vacancies, um, as we all know. Um, and so to now, how how do we think about increasing the staffing? Um, how can we recruit more staff um to fill not just the eight and a quarter that are um vacant? Of which I believe six and a half are actually in the library and recreation program. The others are in the childcare program. Um, so those are sort of outside this discussion. Um, but how can we both um recruit the current vacancies and also new vacancies to fill these positions? And just how does that? And just how does that, what does that look like? Um and so I'm landing on the three, the middle scenario um with the three vacancies, um in part because I want to see what the what the MPCC looks like, how um all the programs are getting up and running, how our budget looks, um just things that we currently are just projecting. Um I would like to, I do that, I would do that with a lot of caution, very honestly. And I want to do everything we can to utilize automation and to utilize, um I think in the report, it said self-service and automation technology, and that we would increase that in under number two. I would like to see that regardless of our headcount. Um how much headcount we can afford, very honestly. I think that we have a new um book circulation system that's been put in recently. We have a new recreation reservation system. We should be fully utilizing utilizing all of that. And then, yes, having staff to supplement when people need help with technology, what whatever. Um but I would like to see us um use automation as much as possible. So and I um when coming back, I would like to sort of get a better um feel for, I know you um that the senior services are going to be moving over, but just really see in the um an organization, how many staff members will generally be at Burgess? How many staff members will generally be at the MPCC? Um just sort of how will all that work out? So that's that's what I've got for right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Um would anyone else like to go next? Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. Uh just following up on the on the staffing, I haven't decided which which scenario I support yet. Um the nutrition services coordinator, that's a new position?
Yes, that would be a new position, and it would require um the city council to update the uh excuse me, the salary schedule.
And if I'm looking at the number of vacancies and the number of proposed staff, that would be fourteen point two five vacancies, well, positions open for the city? If we look at the ones from scenario one and then also the current vacancies?
Yes, if if adding the eight point five current vacancies plus six point oh new, then yeah, that would total fourteen point five.
And then just thinking about that, we have fourteen um point two five um open positions right now. That's the in the best case scenario. Um how are we going to recruit to fill all of those positions?
Yeah, so through like the process that was kind of covered in the presentation, um the advantage in this situation is that there would be multiple positions in the same classification. So like one recruitment could potentially yield multiple hires. So like, excuse me, but for example, just say for the purpose of discussion, a program assistant, um it's a a fairly broad-based classification. If uh if we had multiple vacancies in that classification, for example, one recruitment, we would seek to hire all of the fill all the vacancies from that recruitment if possible. So it wouldn't be fourteen different recruitments. Um looking at the classifications off the top of my head, I think we'd be looking at tops three, maybe four recruitments, that is.
And I'm glancing through the staff report. Does it mention which positions are vacant? The current vacant positions?
Um I don't think those are itemized in the staff report. We would we would have to get that information.
Okay, that'd be great. Helpful to have that. And that's all the questions I have for the moment.
Thank you. Um I was like looking for things between the options, and I'm curious if there is an option that somehow brings together some of the efficiencies that are in option two while also trying to do the the bigger achievements that are set out in option one. And I know, so right now, we're looking at a gap that's about okay, eight, um one point two seven versus point eight three million. And so it's, yeah, it's a little over four hundred or less than four hundred. And so I I'm thinking about that gap there. And if there is a wiggle room, you see, say that i- if you had, or if we had um a million going towards this, what could that extra chunk of of about one, oh gosh, one uh sixty, what could that what could that give us? What could that, what could we achieve with something like that?
Thank you for the question. Um so I think staff would need to kind of go back and and look at that. The scenarios here are presented like for discussion and comparison purposes. Um the primary difference between the three scenarios are the full-time equivalent staff costs. And so as you can see, they are in the mid-six figures, you know, that's salary plus benefits. So to go from, say, I think on scenario two, maybe I'll put it on the screen here so folks can see what we're referring to. Just give me a moment, just for the screenshot of these scenarios here. Okay, so it's like they're on the screen there. So I'm looking at scenario two here, and I believe what Councilmember Door, what you're referring to is the estimated net impact of scenario two is eight hundred thirty six thousand. The estimated impact for scenario one would be one point two seven million. And you're saying, what if we were somewhere around a million dollars? Um looking at that, it would essentially equate to one additional full-time equivalent staff. So you know, that would um allow for a a service level that's kind of between the two scenarios. Some uh we'd have to look at which ones to prioritize there. Um for example, would the focus be on more programs in the maker space for the general public? Or would it be really focused on organizing more robust volunteer engagement? For example, like an after-school homework tutoring center. So I think it would be like those kind of opportunities that we would want to focus in on with that additional resource.
Thank you for walking us through that scenario. And the the reason why I I feel a little conflicted here is I completely resonate with Councilmember Nash's point about us needing to be in a kind of a fiscally responsible, tight moment. We have to tighten our belts everywhere, and so also here. And also, we have this brilliant new facility uh that's coming online. And what an opportunity to fully resource it so it can provide all the resources, all the opportunities to the community, it seems, it 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 aims to serve. And so I I'm thinking about how do we make sure we can capitalize on that opportunity? And so that's why, yeah, I I I think that in-between scenario of trying to get at least one more full-time is is of interest to me, and I'm curious where others are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Door. I believe Councilmember Nash has a question.
Thank you. Um along this line, could you explain um how you were going to go about whenever council chooses one of these scenarios? How are you then going to figure out staffing for the MPCC and for Burgess? I'm trying not to escalate it. Well, I can tell you, I am assuming that some of the current staff will be filling in then at MPCC and that we're not just making decisions in a vacuum, that these are the number of staff we're going to have at um MPCC. It's either going to be
Uh thank you. So I think the question really is about like the specific individuals assigned to the various roles?
No, I'm just sort of, I'm wondering.
I think I I have, can I, can I take a stab at it? So how many employees would we expect to see working at MPCC if we were to go visit it in a year?
Uh yes, thank you. So um what is uh presented here in the scenarios is really about like the additional capacity. So obviously, it is subject to a large extent to city council's direction and ultimate action on on this question. Um currently, and maybe it would be helpful to put another slide on the screen for discussion, which would be the um sorry, it's taking me a second to get there. The organizational chart is what I'm looking for here.
But the six or the three are additive to a baseline amount that are also going to be working there.
Correct, because there are programs that are currently operating either like in other locations, like the senior program, which currently has four point two five full-time equivalent authorized personnel plus temporary and hourly personnel. Um also, the school-aged childcare Bellhaven Youth Center, um I believe it has one full-time equivalent plus temporary hourly personnel. It's just going to kind of move whole cloth into the new facility. Uh the Bellhaven Branch Library will, basically that operation will move to the new facility. There aren't staff like permanently assigned to that one facility. They all kind of rotate. Um but the staff needed there are approximately two full-time equivalent to cover, you know, like kind of the whole fifty-six hours, seven-day-a-week operation with a rotating cast of folks. So right there, that is seven point two five full-time equivalent kind of currently in service that would move into the new facility. And then um what it depending on which scenario the city council directs, you know, those would be additive to that. So anywhere from this well, not entirely, because we would still need to um put recreation and sports staff in the new facility, which um our recommendation would be a minimum of one point five or two full-time equivalent, similar to the branch library, just to cover like the 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 spot. So um they would have to kind of come from other areas within the department. So back to the question, the number of staff would would expect working in the new facility, um that that baseline number would be somewhere more in the order of nine point two five plus whatever the city council kind of authorizes, plus temporary and hourly staff who uh actually perform upwards, more than a third of the total hours worked, sometimes as high as fifty percent, depending on the season.
So what I would really like to see again is um some how MPCC staff and Burgess staff sort of stack up, realizing it's not going to be one for one. Um but I am assuming that when we say that we want um equivalent hours, equivalent services, that if we do not provide six new headcount for the MPCC, it doesn't mean necessarily that we are going to do three less, that they're going to be lacking three. I'm assuming there's going to be some fluid motion. Um and it may not be ref, I don't know how you will reflect it. That's obviously your role. Um but that there will be some cross um campus work, and it may be some people are assigned um to it, but it's not that there will be less activities, less um I'm hoping that the activities and programming will be similar, um regardless of where we end up with the staffing, that all this this staffing conversation is more for the department, not specifically for not exclusively for MPCC.
Certainly, the the that's all interconnected, right? The the department is responsible for delivering services across all the different facilities and programs. And so um this is a pretty significant facility. So depending on the direction here tonight and what's actually implemented, it certainly has an effect on the overall service levels. Now that said, the uh baseline assumption, which has been a through line in the entire conversation since this facility was conceived, and even before, I believe, is that the services should be comparable or equivalent in both locations. I think the overall question is, you know, what what is that level? Uh as far as like individual staff, it it can really vary, you know, by the individual, but service level is what we're kind of focused on.
Um I wanted to follow up on the vacancies again. So the existing six point, so there's eight point two five vacancies in the department. It sounds like six point two five of those are library and recreation. That's, I heard somebody say that.
That 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 sounds about right. I'd have to confirm, but that seems like it's in the ballpark.
So I am totally sympathetic about staff members um being over, having to carry the load of vacant positions. I am curious about how long those six point two five positions have been vacant and what has been happening with that work? If that's work that others are having to work overtime, like more to do, or if that's work just not happening? And then if it's work that's not happening, how missed is it? And then would there be an opportunity to repurpose some of that headcount to make up a shortfall if we go in a direction under six? So if there's if there's out of the six point two five, I'm just totally making this up. Let's say there's two positions that were like for Dungeons and Dragons twenty-four seven or something, and we just haven't been offering that for the last three years has well, that's a terrible example. But anyway, um I hope you understand what I'm saying without me trying to come up with a terrible example, but just how does that work?
Well, um let me attempt to roll a twenty on my twenty-sided Dungeons and Dragons dice here and and answer your question. Um thank you for that illustration. I enjoyed it very much, actually. Um so the, when we have vacant positions, um the work still needs to get done. Uh the bulk of the work in the department is providing direct customer service to the community through programs and services. So um most of the vacant positions are are backfilled by folks who've been provisionally appointed to the role, um have acting assignments or through just increasing the use of temporary and hourly personnel. So that's one big bucket. Um another bucket is staff, current staff just taking on more. Um that is, you know, in the short term, you kind of do what you have to do. In the long term, it it has deleterious effects, just like the human body. You can go without some nutrients for a while, but if it goes on too long, you start to have some longer-term issues. Um there also are longer-term or or I guess quote unquote lower priority in the moment kind of projects that just kind of get deferred. Uh one of them is like the evaluation, implementation, rollout of new self-service and automation technologies or um grant development to like, you know, identify external funding for new programs. That all like takes longer-term time and effort, um developing volunteer programs. And these are all things that are from the department strategic plan. Um uh more substantial, detailed uh uh customer uh feedback um and needs assessment processes across the board so that we can better target our services to address community need. And um you know, those kind of like longer-term projects, you know, tend to kind of get put on the back burner when we're short-staffed. So it's it's that combination of things.
Thank you. Um so um I tend to, given all this information, um I just want to go on the record saying I am, I don't want our employees to burn out, like they're our most valuable resource. So I would very much encourage whatever positions are needed to undo that backfill um for burnout, to to prioritize those. Um I am, I love how Councilmember Door is always trying to come up with the the midpoint thing. And I, in this case, I'm kind of with her here. Um I also think the millionish dollars lines up really nicely with what City Manager Murphy was saying in terms of the longer-term million-dollar um more stable funding. So there's a nice um compliment there. Um and then so and I I think it allows, I I would encourage you to to look at what those unfulfilled positions are and the prioritization of that work um and how it stacks up to the prioritization of the the launch of the new center and see if there are opportunities. Um sometimes I know if I defer work long enough, it just kind of goes away. So um and if it requires the city council to take another look at like a strategic plan or what level of service we have. But I think the four um employees around that million dollar, doesn't have to be exactly a million dollars, you know, to have a little fungibility there, um makes me feel a lot more comfortable, given our financial situation. Um and I think allows the center to get And I think allows the center to get off on a strong footing. And again, I would encourage a feedback loop with the council on how the department's going. I think we've asked for some additional information about staffing at the two centers and kind of what, a little more detail about what that looks like. And that will help us make these tough decisions going forward. But I think I'm leaning towards council member Dor's recommendation at this point. I'm curious to hear what others think.
One thing I might just add there, I really appreciate that you came back to that continual evaluation. And something I'd also want to see is that we get feedback from the community of, okay, the, these are the folks that have been hired. Are these the right folks or these are right roles to serve the needs and the priorities that the community has said they want for this center? And so, you know, if they say, we really want the maker space, we should listen to that. Or if they really want more access and more programs elsewhere, we should listen to that. And so I, I hope that we can build that flexibility and that feedback loop in. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
And I think it's implicit with, that we agree with, certainly I agree, and I think I can say we all agree with the local hire that's been discussed, do whatever we can within the constraints of to recruit from the community and from the city. And then also I do just want to put a plug in that it is very important to get an emergency coordinator in. For one reason, this is one of the emergency backup centers. And, but I also do not want to stall in any way this discussion to go down that road.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. And I, I have a question just following up on the emergency manager that is allocated in our budget, so that, so that is definitely something that is coming. And a question about the senior program assistant, that is not specific to the senior program itself. That is just the title, a classification, just looking at the, the job description.
Correct. Senior program assistant is kind of like a journey level classification for a program assistant. Then the terminology senior is used on a number of classifications throughout the city, like maintenance worker, senior maintenance worker, and so on.
Okay, I'm, I am, I'm in between scenario one and two. I'm in between the two and, and it's partly because, you know, these are the folks that are on the ground working and just thinking about the burnout, what our existing staff has been able to accomplish, not being fully staffed. So I can imagine what they will do when they are. I'm, at that number of the new positions that you're asking for and then the vacancies together, to me is a large number, so it's fourteen. So I'm, I'm thinking about that as well. But I feel like that there needs to be, in scenario two, there should at least be the senior program assistant. I think that's important to have that supportive staff person there. And just for, for clarity, I'm in support of using fund one-one-one, but I also know that coffee, cost recovery fees also contribute to keeping the center running. And so I'm interested in that as well. So I don't know if this will come back before our cost recovery fee schedule comes back. I don't know the order when that's going to come.
Thank you for that. I'll, I'll try to fill that. And city manager Murphy, please jump in to correct me. I did get confirmation that the, the plan at this point is for the master fee schedule to potentially have a first reading on December fifth. And in our planning around this item before you write now, the plan was to potentially bring back for action, whatever is directed also on December fifth. So they, they could potentially come forward on the same evening.
So the master fee schedule will not be a study session. It would definitely be an item that we will vote on.
Well, others can jump in and fill in blanks if I get them wrong, but I believe that there would be multiple readings of the master fee schedule to comply with some, some new developments at the state level.
Thank you.
So I'm hearing some coalescing around a two, a one point five option. Councilmember Nash, are you holding, because I believe they need kind of council direction from the majority of council to move forward with one of these scenarios? Or can you clarify if you've gotten enough direction from us or if you want more specificity?
As much specificity and direction as the city council can provide at this point in time is, is most welcomed, given the timeline for opening the new facility and the preparations that need to happen.
So are there any other comments or pieces of direction? Otherwise, I think we've given you enough, or maybe city manager Murphy, have we given you enough?
Yes, I, I, I'll, I'll compare notes here with the Mr. Reinhardt, but I, I, maybe I could just summarize a little bit, because again, this is a study session, so there's direction. We need to come back to kind of tee things up for action. One thing that we just did talk about was the master fee schedule, and that's going to be its own sort of independent track. It may coincidentally be on, on the same evening that we also come back with this, but I'd say that the master fee schedule, trying to move that forward on its own track, irrespective, because there's other issues besides simply this topic. So the, the other things that I am, I'm hearing, the, the kind of the two key things that I'm hearing, or three, three things. One is that there's additional information that the council has asked for that will, we've been taking notes on and we'll, we'll do our best to be able to report back on those. Some of them may be easier for us to, to do than others. And if, if we look into something that requires more research than we were initially estimating right now, we'll, we'll just report out on that. So I think there's information requested by the council. The two additional things I think are important, this is where it would be good to make sure that there's at least three council members in support of this. And again, there's not a, there's a fifth council member that's not here this evening, but at, at a minimum, if we have three council members here this evening requesting that. And that is one, one is the potential use of fund one-one-one. And kind of part of keeping this in mind is that we've got the remainder of this fiscal year, which has a practical matter. Once, once the building's actually finished and open, it is only going to be a matter of months or months. So like the, the demand on this current fiscal year for the use of that fund is going to be relatively minor. It's more the, the future year. So one is just to, if we can get confirmation about the use of fund one-one-one. And to, to my record, I, I have seen a majority of the council in support of it.
You had everyone up here nodding on that.
And then the, the last thing is the, the number of employees and for the full-time equivalent. I think, I think what I'm hearing is the potential for four. And so that's where, as we come back, I think that's what we would focus in on, is the research on that. It's, it's different between what the council will actually do, but I don't think we need to spend more time on more than four. And we can always go less than four for the actual action. So I think that's, that's what we would focus in on. So I think it's, it's whether it's, if it's, comes down to three or four, we can definitely do those two, two options as we come, come back to the council. So that, that I think is the last thing that we need assistance on, because I'd rather not have to have more than two scenarios coming back to the council in terms of staffing. So if it's three or four, that would be what's helpful.
So I'm seeing councilmember Nash would like to keep it at three. I'm comfortable with four. Vice Mayor Taylor, four. So does that give you, there's three of us that would like four and one that would like three. And I know we're missing another council member, so I don't know if you have a chance to speak offline.
Right, yeah, so we can come.
If it's appropriate to have those two scenarios.
Come back with four with the option of what, what it would, what, what we would recommend to go down to three.
And what my concern about going from three versus four is just how many vacancies we have and whether or not we're really able to fill those and just incorporate them into the, into the plan. I would like to see some recommendation as to a feedback loop and when we might get updates, if possible.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. I think it's going to be critical. The launch of the center kind of not being a pilot, like we're going to reduce, but seeing how we're doing and what the staffing and the visitor like, and what programs people are wanting and where we need to lean in more, lean out more. Actually, I thought about the master fee schedule. So I understand it's on a separate track, but it does seem like, let's say hypothetically again, like we like waived all fees or something for everybody at this new center, then our revenue projections would go way down and then we would have a greater need. We would have to make some policy decisions on what services we could offer or how many employee we could staff or, you know, revenues and expenses. So I do feel like they're related. So I guess how sensitive is this, is what we're seeing tonight to the master fee schedule? Because if it is super sensitive, then they're super related, and I feel like we need to know that, if that makes sense.
Let's see, so I'll just, I'll, I'll just clarify a couple of things. I'll turn to Mr. Reinhardt specifically about fees related to the, this program services. I just wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things about the master fee schedule. So there's, the routine would be that the city council is reviewing the master fee schedule on an annual basis. Given some things with the pandemic, we kind of fell off of that. We're, we're, we're in the process of getting back to the annual routine. There's also been some changes in state law, which are going to require us to review that differently. One of the key things about a master fee schedule is the cost of service study, and that's kind of a, a big analysis to be able to justify fees going forward. So this upcoming master fee schedule amendments that we're talking about are pure, are still relying on previous cost of service study. And the city is pretty limited into what it, what it can do with the master fee schedule. After we complete that cost of service study, which will be its own sort of project, and it's a, it's a big lift to actually conduct that, that analysis, then we can kind of revisit fees more generally. But the, the important thing is that there should be an annual routine to revisit the, the fees, and that should allow the year-by-year adjustments and tweaks. So.
So then what fees, I guess this goes back to the assumptions that are built into the projections we're seeing. So we're not going to be like setting fees for the new center as part of the master fee schedule? That's like a later activity? And I'm just, it, can you elaborate?
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn back to Mr. Reinhardt specifically to, to this, these programs and services.
Yes, thank you. In order to charge and collect a fee, it does need to be listed in the master fee schedule. There currently are no fees listed in the master fee schedule specific to the new center. There previously had been some for the old center, but they were removed in a, a previous master fee schedule update. So at a minimum, the fees would need to kind of be like reinstated. Also, there were some, there was some direction from the council and the community related to like the accessibility, in particular for residents who live in close proximity to the center. So, you know, there'll be some information about that in the context of the master fee schedule. Right at this point, that, that direction has not been interpreted to like completely eliminate user fees. Certainly, if the city council wanted to direct that, you know, that, that would be an option. I think the impact would be something that at the time could be evaluated.
Like an actual scenario, but.
Yeah. So, I mean, it is interrelated, but I don't think it's necessarily something that could completely undermine the city council's decision-making process on the expenditure side.
Councilmember Nash.
If I may venture into the master fee schedule a little bit. Accessibility is important citywide for residents who are unable to pay. It would be nice to, if there's something we can do for residents anywhere at all centers. And then.
Yes, we will bring back some more information about that.
Thank you. And then the other question is, within this cost of service, do we have an opportunity to rebalance the residents versus non-residents?
I, I'm looking to the city manager about the cost of services study, but I believe the answer is yes, that it would be, you would need to do such a study in order to do like that kind of rebalancing.
Okay, that would, that would require. In other words, if we're taking away from one, giving to another, obviously that may also change the dynamics of who's actually using the facility, so those numbers may change. But do we have any discretion? And I don't need an answer right now, just as we're going forward.
Councilmember Dor.
Yes, so coming back to this, this decision about our recommendation, I want to elevate on the option that we want to see with four, also getting a recommendation on what that fourth person would be. And I heard Vice Mayor Taylor say, especially thinking about bringing back that senior program assistant. And so I, I'm curious, when you bring this back to us, your recommendation there, and if, if that sounds like the right person to, to be in that role as our number four person in the scenario.
That, that's exactly the position that I would have recommended.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. And I just have just one more comment, and that is just the, is a recruitment for the vacant positions. I just press upon that. I know you said that there are some that are in the same classification. So when you do the recruitment for the new positions, hopefully that you're including the vacant positions as well in that recruitment?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I think, yes, councilmember.
Um, just don't need an answer right now, but if you can think about whether there's an opportunity to give full-time work to anyone who's working part-time and do the balancing that was mentioned in the public comment, which you may already be doing.
Okay, I think we gave you some decisive direction and some other homework. So thank you. And when will we be seeing you again on this topic?
Thank you. The direction has been incredibly helpful. We're very grateful for that. I believe right now the tentative plan is to come back on December fifth.
All right, okay, you said that. Thank you. Okay, it is eight, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. It is eight oh eight. Let's take a quick five-minute break before we launch into our second and final study session of the night. So we'll come back at eight thirteen on the dot.
Okay, having our city council back at our in-person days, Mayor Wilson, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and welcome back. We are in the middle of our study sessions. We are now going to move on to our final study session, study session of the night, G two, to provide direction on the Vision Zero Action Plan, also known as the what, V Zap? Okay, it's the V Zap. Um and here to introduce this item is our Assistant Public Works Director Hugh Louch. Good evening, Mr. Louch.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Taylor, and members of council and the public for joining us today to talk about the Vision Zero Action Plan. I'm joined by Dana Weissman from Farr and Pierce, who's our consultant uh project manager for this project. And let me go ahead and share my screen. A little presentation to walk you through. Um we're very excited to be here tonight to talk about the Vision Zero Action Plan. And this is something that council authorized um a little more than a year ago uh for us to to pursue. Um uh you know, it's a great opportunity for us at the city to really be diving deep into safety um a as a key function of what we do uh when we think about our transportation system. Um we are, oh, here we go. Um I'll walk you through what we're looking to hear from you all tonight. Um and then we have kind of an overview of the project and information about kind of two key products uh that are are core to this plan, the the project priorities that emerge from the plan, and in terms of what projects we think we should be doing on our our transportation system um as it relates to safety, and then an action plan, um and really sort of a matrix of actions that we'll be using to help implement the plan over time. Um and then I can talk about next steps. Um and so just to talk quickly about what we're looking for. So we're really looking for feedback on uh how we develop the projects, so the kind of framework that we used for that. Any gaps or concerns you have about those projects? Anything you think is missing, that things we should be thinking about? Um any uh questions you have about the list of specific actions that we've identified? And in particular, uh the ones that are identified kind of as near term actions? And so we have that in the presentation, but there's a much longer list that's in the staff report that we can get to um as well. Um and before I hand it off to Dana to talk about sort of beginning uh sort of the overview of the project and and why we're doing it, you know, I just want to note that there's been a lot of work to get us here today, a lot of kind of data analysis and work. We've done a lot of public outreach that we've done, including in-person workshops. Uh we've really been trying to target those um, you know, in in ways that really bring out uh members uh of the full communities. We've had workshops in English and in Spanish. Uh we've had uh listening sessions with community organizations. We've done pop-ups at the uh farmer's market. We've done Complete Streets Commission meetings, really a lot of different things. And then a lot of kind of targeted presentations to groups that we know sort of intersect with safety or that we know from our data analysis have particular kinds of safety challenges. Um or the, you know, certain kinds of issues are overrepresented uh compared uh, you know, to their population. So we've really been doing our best to try to make sure we're doing a thorough, robust engagement as part of this process. Um and with that, I'll hand it over to Dean.
Great, thank you for having me here tonight. Really excited to be collaborating with you and his team on this project. Um so I want to start uh with the reason we're all here tonight, and that is Menlo Park's strong commitment to safety. Um so in 2016, with the adoption of the circulation element of the general plan, Menlo Park concluded a Vision Zero policy, and that um policy set a goal to eliminate traffic fatalities and reduce the number of non-fatal collisions by fifty percent by 2040. Um and so the Vision Zero Action Plan is really serving as the roadmap for the city to achieve that um ambitious and really important goal for safety. So the Vision Zero Action Plan, um I think of it as having kind of three key stages. The first one is to gather and analyze the safety data. The second is to develop strategies based on the findings of the data analysis. Um where a crash is occurring, who's involved? Why are they occurring? What are the conditions surrounding them? What are some of the risk factors that lead to those crashes? Um and developing strategies that really address those those crash types and those crash risks. And then finally, the third step, where where we are right now, pulling all of that together to develop a Vision Zero Action Plan um that includes specific uh action strategies, whether they're infrastructure related or policy and program related, that will help the city accomplish its um safety goals and through actions in the near term, medium term, and long term. So I want to share a um before I kind of dive into some of the details of the analysis that we've conducted um with you and his team and the findings from that. Um I want to just talk about the, really the the foundation of the Vision Zero Action Plan, and it's based on the safe system approach. Um this is a kind of a philosophy about how we approach safety. It's really rapidly becoming standard practice across the country, adopted by FHWA about four or five years ago. Um and it has kind of six key principles um and five key elements. And the the six principles, starting with just the recognition that death and serious injury on our streets is unacceptable, and there's something that we can and should do about it. Um it recognizes that humans make mistakes. They always have, they always will, we we always will on the streets. Um and that those mistakes should not lead to the loss of life or severe injury. Um it uh establishes that we all have a shared responsibility um to address safety challenges um and that our intervention should be proactive, not just reactive to where we've seen crashes happen, but thinking ahead to address risk, to um head off future collisions. Um and then finally, strategies that we implement need to be redundant, that there's no silver bullet, um that we need a system that through all of its parts works together to really create and and allow people to get home safely. And so thinking about those strategies, five key strategies in the safe system approach, um really looking at safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roads, and post-crash care. And together, all of those elements um together form a safe system. And the action plan that we're in the process of developing and and that council will see shortly in the coming months um is really uh structured around the safe system approach. So one of the um first kind of questions that we set out to answer with our analysis is where are crashes occurring in Menlo Park? And it quickly became clear that there is a a really significant concentration of injury collisions on a small subset of roadways in the city. Um so you can see here on the slide, twenty percent of roadway miles in the city see almost all fatalities and serious injuries, ninety-three percent. They also see seventy-one percent of all pedestrian injury collisions and eighty-six percent of all bicycle injury collisions. So by focusing on on really just a small slice of the city's roadway network and and addressing um safety challenges in those locations, we're targeting um really a a very strong, high concentration of crashes, in particular fatalities and serious injuries um across the city. And the where the where the high collision corridors are really based on a kind of backwards look at where crashes have occurred historically. We also want to make sure that we're thinking proactively and and thinking systemically, so citywide, not just um intervening where we've seen crashes occur in the past, but again, kind of addressing safety risk and trying to act more proactively before crashes occur. Um so we looked at um several roadway and land use contexts in the city. Um and each of these contexts has unique safety and risks associated with it, and also unique, a unique set of safety strategies that can best address those types of crashes. So on the very left, um you'll see the entire Menlo Park roadway network split into state highways, city circulatory roadways, and local-serving roadways. State roadways, for example, are are generally very wide, high speed. There are only seven percent of the total roadway mileage in in Menlo Park, and they make up nearly fifty percent of all fatalities and serious injuries. So there's significant overrepresentation of fatalities and serious injuries on state roadways. Um circulatory roadways, these are designed for vehicle throughput, higher speeds. These are about, what these contain about twice the roadway miles of state roadways um and see sixty-three percent of fatalities and serious injuries. So another kind of strongly overrepresented subset of roadways. And each of these has their kind of own unique strategies compared to local-serving roadways, which are the vast majority of roadways in Menlo Park, um but only see thirty percent of the fatalities and serious injuries. However, they see the most number of injury collisions involving people walking and biking, as well as people who are seniors and considered sixty-five and older, um and children under fifteen. So when we kind of slice it in different ways, we can see how um certain roadways are are seeing certain types of crashes more frequently than others. And again, certain strategies are more um applicable on those roadway types. Um so similarly for for signals, um very small percentage of intersections, only five percent are signalized, but those see forty-two percent of all fatalities and serious injuries. Um and side street stop controlled intersections, there are more of them across the city. Uh however, we see more frequent pedestrian bicycle and and um turning movements by vehicles impacting people walking and biking at those intersection types. Um and then finally, schools, about a third of Menlo Park's land area is within a thousand feet of a school. Um and nearly fifty percent of all fatalities and serious injuries occur within um one thousand feet of a school. Um and so we, in particular, see uh victims under the age of fifteen are overrepresented um within those school areas. So those are some of the um both kind of reactive and spot location findings, as well as some of the risk factors that we've been assessing and and identifying um specific to Menlo Park. And those feed directly into the identification of uh priorities for project locations um and kind of systemic inter uh interventions that the city is looking to. Yeah, back to you.
Thanks, Dana. So I what I want to do is kind of talk a little bit about now where we are are at in terms of using all that data information to identify kind of specific projects. And we are, um you know, I think uh have been very clear that we we do have to wrap up this plan by the end of the year. Um and we do have some significant resources for the Middle Avenue uh uh undercrossing project that are dependent on having uh this type of plan. Um although really, the purpose of the plan goes far beyond that. Um and so we, when we thought about how we wanted to approach this project, the first thing that we did, when we thought about how we wanted to approach projects, the first thing we did was sort of compare that high uh collision corridor network with where we have um existing ongoing projects that we're doing right now. And you can see this map kind of highlights a number of different areas in the city where we have ongoing projects uh that are coming out of our transportation master plan um and and really kind of correspond a lot of them very closely to where we have uh where where uh roads are experiencing this kind of concentration of collisions that Dana described. Um and so these are all ones that, you know, seem to be uh kind of important for uh continuing and addressing the kind of safety challenges that we have today. Um and and they really span, you know, across the entire city. And then there are other places on this network where we do have other future projects we are probably going to want to look at. Um and there's a number of projects in the transportation master plan. Um and those would sort of be prioritized, consistent with the way we're talking about kind of prioritization generally, and I'll I'll get into that um uh in a second. So um and then the other thing we want to do uh with Dana, which men mentioning is really identify places in the near term where, as we complete these projects, we can also think more systemically about safety, where we can make lower cost uh improvements across a a broader range of locations uh and be able to address some of those particular types of challenges that Dana was describing. Um and then off the uh high collision corridor network, we also do want to think about sort of focused uh efforts on the local road network. And we did have a study session with you talking about uh the neighborhood traffic management plan, and that's sort of where that, we intend that um to get picked up uh sort of following direction that you gave us at that study session. So I I'd like to talk a little bit about where we're at with the systemic priorities. Um the i i in what, these are very much draft, you see the big draft there, uh maps that we've developed for two kind of core areas where we imagine uh sort of starting uh to complement the work we're doing on the broader kind of corridor study projects with more focused work on some of these intersections and doing it across the city. And so what we've started to do is try to break all of these intersections. And so, you know, these um uh all these uh um side street stop control intersections, there are over a thousand of them in the city. So they're not all important, but but many, many of them are really important for us to look at. Um and so we've started to try to break those into tiers, and we do that kind of using these criteria. Um and we try to use criteria that are both, um as Dana was saying, kind of reactive, like where do we have collisions now? But also proactive, which is, you know, where are the networks that people are traveling on? Where are the path, the ways people are going, where we know that they'd like to be able to cross certain intersections, but may find it challenging? Or where there are sort of communities that may uh not, you know, be experiencing some of the um particular kinds of safety issues? Where maybe that's seniors, maybe that's uh children, maybe that's, you know, others that we can really kind of focus um in on. And then certainly building from the outreach, making sure that we are uh considering our sort of historically underserved communities as we um approach this. So these are kind of the range of criteria that we've identified. Um and and this is sort of the beginning of that prioritization. And and as I say, one of the things I think we're really looking for is if you have feedback on this kind of approach. is if you have feedback on this kind of approach, where we're going from thinking about what's this broad problem to like? What is the first set of things we're going to do? And then kind of build a program over a number of years where we'll be addressing these kinds of challenges and making improvements. And we've started to do some of these things already. So, you know, right over here on Alma and Willow, we've got an example of kind of a a simple, kind of quick build project, or it's a little bit different, but the Menlo University Intersection is another one where we've done some kind of quick build, lower cost things that we can implement more quickly. And trying to not exactly standardize those, but use similar treatments in multiple places where we can kind of batch those together and address some of the safety issues we have on our transportation system. And then the other, I'd say, the second sort of major systemic project we really want to dive into are looking at our signalized intersections. And as Dana said, you see the huge overrepresentation of collisions at our signalized intersections compared to the number of intersections that are signalized in the city. And this includes both, you know, our signals that we control and the ones that are on state highways. And we control, I think, fewer than half of all the signals that are in the city. But there's still a lot of things we can do and we can work with our partners at Caltrans to really work on these. And these, you know, may include things from various kinds of turning movement restrictions or controls that we have and we can implement. They can involve, you know, striping of how we stripe crosswalks, how we stripe bike facilities through the through the intersection and, you know, better signage and then other kinds of things as well. So there's a number of different types of things that we could do at these locations, sort of consistent with a sort of best practice toolbox that'll come out of this plan. And again, we want to use sort of similar criteria for the so sort of a similarly consistent framework. And some may matter more for certain types of intersections than others, but we definitely want to try to be consistent with those factors. And then the last one is really then that local, more local road thing where we want to focus on all of these factors, but also dive a little bit more into the kind of cut through traffic issue. And that's something that we'll be thinking about for as we bring back the NTMP program. So that's kind of the high level projects. There's a lot more we could talk about there. And then the other thing I do want to make sure we give you a preview of is the action plan. And action plan is really meant in my mind to complement what we're doing on the projects. The projects are the thing that, you know, in the Transportation Division of Public Works, you know, probably the most visible, one of the most visible things we do because we'll be out there doing outreach and stuff like that. But there's a lot of other things that go on, both within the Transportation Division, Public Works more generally, the city, other city departments and our partners and other agencies. And the action plan is really the place, I think, we bring all that together. And we have all the different ways that we can address safety across the city and across our partner agencies as well. And you can see they use those same categories that Dana described to you in terms of here are the different ways that we can impact safety and we want all of these things to fall into place together. Because we know that, you know, success is really contingent upon this kind of collaborative work across all of these issues. So so a broad set of issues that we're looking at. And what we've done so far is kind of pick out a handful of these that are really, we see as likely near term actions. And some of these are probably just logical things to do. Others are ones that based on the types of collisions we have or other things that we're seeing in the city, we think are important. So we want to, we've been doing this plan, you know, we will come to an end of this particular contract. We won't be able to call Dana up and say, what do we do about this anymore? And we'll, you know, we'll want to continue that. And so, you know, having this kind of working group at the agency and and kind of within sort of my division, a coordinator, someone staff to help sort of bring folks together. We have existing meetings that we do with police and stuff like that. It's a great way to sort of make sure that on a consistent basis, we're marching forward. We've got this action plan. We're checking in on that. We're checking in on the data and information and moving that forward. So we think that's kind of critical, you know, continuing to pursue grants, you know, we do a lot of that already. Continuing to make sure we're thinking about how the planning work we do in transportation is really impacting all of our communities. And in particular, our underserved communities, you know, building on work we've done for other projects like the Environmental Justice Element and this and this planning process. And that sort of really helps our sort of near term actions to sort of build the culture of like thinking about Vision Zero within the city. Education is a huge part of this, right? Making sure people who are traveling on the transportation system are being as safe as possible. And of course, we hear a lot about kids and e-bike use. And, you know, given the types of issues we have, we really think working with sort of sort of, you know, youth who are willing to take a leadership role and willing to sort of be the, you know, kind of influence their peers. Because we all know that they don't listen to the adults at that age, you know, is a really critical strategy to help building, you know, both for the immediate issues, but also that kind of long term, you know, behavior. And then also thinking about making sure we're targeting our enforcement efforts really where where we see the highest risk behaviors. And this is something that really effectively, the police department already does, but it's sort of making sure we sort of message that consistently and making sure that we track it appropriately so that we can communicate back how that's happening. Design of the roads is super important. So the quick builds I already mentioned, you know, the side street stop control intersections, you know, kind of mirrors up directly with updating our crosswalk policy. So that's kind of consistent with how we're going to treat those intersections and and being able to say, this is what our policy is for that. And this is, you know, why we're making changes. Bringing down speeds is super critical. We know, you know, from a public health perspective that, you know, if you experience more force, your likelihood of an injury or fatality is much greater. So trying to reduce the speeds on our streets and other actions. And then, you know, while my role sort of in the post crash care is is much more limited. You know, there's certainly a huge role for emergency response, a huge role for for police as well. And making sure we're getting the information back from them. So those are some of the actions, you know, that we've identified, I think, as kind of critical first year actions. There's a much longer list and we're certainly interested from hearing in hearing from you all about, you know, the ones you think are are important or or maybe missing or maybe need to be modified. So in terms of where we hear, I mentioned, we've done a tremendous amount of outreach on this. We are trying to work really hard to get this wrapped up and make sure that we're still staying kind of true to the community and bringing in voices from across the community. So we have ongoing outreach in this month, including more public workshops, more coordination with stakeholders. Our hope is to have a full draft final plan in December and tentatively to present that to our Complete Streets Commission mid-December and then have it adopted by the council in early January. And all that information is available on our the city website, so which is menlopark.gov/VisionZero. And then just to bring back real quick, these are kind of the key questions that I had at the beginning. And if you, I'll leave that for a minute while we take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Louch and Ms. Weissman. Thank you for being here. So City Clerk Karen, can you please call for a public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G2, provide direction on the Vision Zero Action Plan. If you are participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Currently at six speakers. And this will be the final call for public comment on study session item G2.
Excuse me, City Clerk Karen, you might have another card coming in from someone in chambers.
Thank you. So for anyone participating virtually, this will be the final call for raised hands. Okay, so it looks like we are at eight speakers. And our final speaker of the evening will be Kenneth Ma. But our first speaker is going to be Bill Kirsch, followed by Matthew Raskoff.
Hi, this is Bill Kirsch. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Bill.
Thank you. Yeah, I had to come home. I'm really happy to see the city tackling Vision Zero. What I'd like to see is aside from the, to me, the no brainer high, you know, the high corridor crash network, those are all our high speed roads. So it makes sense that we're going to have more crashes and fatalities, injuries. But I'd like the city to also mandate that we're or declare that our residential streets are all going to be slow streets. And when we redo the NTMP, instead of asking neighborhoods to beg for slow streets, the slow street should be the given and the city should be proactive in making all the streets, especially the ones that they know are high speed cut through, like my street, Partridge Avenue. Go be proactive in slowing traffic on those streets. For example, the city of Charlotte, I've done some research. They've been using rubber speed cushions or speed humps or street tables. Rubber cushions, the rubber humps are one third the cost. They can be, they can be installed very quickly on a trial basis. I've heard that they are not noisier than the asphalt, more permanent structures. But I'd like to see the city be much more proactive in using trying rubber speed humps, speed tables, get them out throughout the city where we know we have high speed traffic in the residential areas. Let's slow people down. That's going to be, that's going to reduce accidents. It's going to reduce injuries. It's going to encourage people to walk and bike. And that's what we really need for the zero, for the for this action plan. Vision Zero, we just need to get people, the ones that can, out of their automobiles and using walkways and bike lanes and be comfortable. In the allied arts here, we have almost no sidewalks. And so people are walking out in the streets and you're kind of at the tyranny of the automobile. And we have this, we all know we have this sort of medieval roadway infrastructure that we've inherited. But let's, let's just mandate and declare, we're going to have slow streets in this city and get proactive. And I encourage the city to try using rubber speed humps because there's so much lower cost, can be installed very quickly on a trial basis. And if they don't work, they can be pulled out. But let's, instead of having citizens beg for slow streets, let's just mandate and declare we're going to have slow streets. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Raskoff, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Hi, this is Matthew Raskoff. I am co-chair of the Safe Routes to Schools Committee at the Oak Knoll School. And I'm here with my four-year-old Florence, with whom I bike every single day commuting to her preschool in Palo Alto. So I'm speaking both as a road user, but also representative of the school community. First thing I wanted to say is just thanks to the city council and to the staff, in particular to Mr. Louch for all the improvements that we've seen recently. I know how hard this is. I know how difficult some of these decisions have been for the city council, especially on removing parking. And I think we've got some real momentum. Middle Avenue project to me has been a tremendous success and it took some political courage from this council. And I just want to commend each of you who voted for that and express my thanks. And and my hope that we will continue to make safety improvements that benefit the whole city. The consultant report points out several data points that I just wanted to draw your attention to because they weren't discussed up till now. So they did a benchmarking study that compared Menlo Park to 94 similar sized cities across the state of California. And found that Menlo Park, contrary to what many think, is the third most dangerous city among this peer group of 94 for bicyclists across the state of California. It is the eighth most dangerous city among the peer group of 94 for pedestrians above the age of 65. It is third most dangerous for speed related accidents. We had 176 victims killed and injured during this study period on average, you know, over over between 2017 and 2019. That corresponds to one out of 200 of our residents being killed or injured every single year, one out of 200 people. There's only 35,000 people, you know, in the census data. That is extraordinarily high. And I, I think, you know, I, I very happy to see the progress on the projects. I agree with the previous speaker. You know, the high speed corridors should definitely be the attention. I think Mr. Mouch, Mr. Louch spoke to this as well. But we need to be much more aggressive about improving safety across the entire network. And we can't just focus on the most dangerous roads. There's many high stress areas across the network where there are near misses all the time. I had one with my daughter just yesterday and those don't necessarily show up in the crash data. But our, our group, our Safe Routes to Schools group has compiled a Google map crowdsourcing all of the high stress areas across the city, drawing from the school communities. Data like that, you know, and this is, this is in the consultant report. They're hard to collect, but they are available. And I hope we can build a connected, safe network that prioritizes all users of the road equally. Thank you for the chance to comment.
Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Kevin Rennie.
Dear Dias, I'm Jenny Michelle, D3 resident, City Clerk Judy Fan Club member. Personal comments, as always, great work. Today I'm looking at the aggregate, the planning culture and our forecasted assumptions. The climate is collapsing. A main driver is transportation. Transitioning away from the vehicle has been deferred and is awkward. We're in that awkward phase of losing front teeth as a child. That it is uncomfortable is a good indicator that we're doing the necessary work. But this is a different type of awkward because it's self inflicted. It's unnecessary, this vehicle centric life. And it's actually killing us. All morbid puns intended. Yes, I was the dead 101 Caltrans worker for Halloween. I'll be the first to admit, I love my three ton, dead dino burning cozy living room on wheels. Man, and we're working to shed ourselves of it. To Mr. Raskoff's comments, as someone who lives on Willow Road, who knows the vehicle traffic patterns like a daily ASMR meditation, I witnessed the people speeding and driving recklessly on Willow Road. Overall, our, our neighbors are us. I recognize us. Hey, you. We are the danger. We're the ones responsible for creating the unsafe conditions. My remedy default is to the receipts. Traffic cameras are effective at enforcement, moving away from the biased officer confrontations. From the municipality perspective, the key is reducing vehicle miles driven for safety and for climate goals. Note, the current average cost of owning a vehicle with a car note is now 750 a month. The same amount that should be the cap on the rental burden for anyone earning 45,000 a year or $22 an hour or 20% of gross earnings. So it's a shell game. You can even either have a dwelling or a car note, not both. Labor should be able to move slowly and safely without fear of retaliation from the employer because we utilize healthier transport options. Labor should not feel stressed and witness bloody scenes each day. We can, or when can labor and the planetary systems process? See, we don't bake in that assumption. Anyway, the, all of a sudden, the 12-story housing structure in my backyard sounds like a godset. You feel me? Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Rennie, followed by Adina Levin. Our next speaker is Kevin Rennie, followed by Adina Levin.
Okay. Council and staff, I am Kevin Rennie from the Willows neighborhood, have two kids that ride their bikes to Lower Laurel School most days. Happy to see the city council taking action to implement Vision Zero with the Middle Ave, Caltrain crossing, the other improvements on a middle field have, have been welcomed in the spirit of Vision Zero. It's not just about safety. It's also about equity and mobility. I would like to see near-miss reporting, not just fatalities and quote-unquote "reported" injuries. Because I think that would change a lot in, in the, in mobility. Equity, basically, people get intimidated by riding their bikes or walking on most of the roads in the area, as Matt previously spoke to with, with the report he called out. I think a lot of people just don't bike or walk in general. It's difficult to move across the city, especially from the Willows neighborhood to downtown. Trying to ride my bike from on Ravenswood, sometimes I'll take Laurel, but the, the middle Caltrain underpass would be really nice, but there needs to be significantly more infrastructure. Putting bike lanes on roads were made initially for cars. There needs to be more specific things for bikes. Additionally, smaller things, just sidewalks. I live in the Willows neighborhood. Woodland is grossly, there's parts of woodland that we're forced to walk on the road or bike on the, walk on the road, because there's no sidewalk, or there's vegetation that pushes us there, or there's people that have fences all the way to the road, and then we have to walk on the road. And also, lots of cars park on, park on sidewalks, and there's zero enforcement. I call the police multiple times. I never see anything done. Thank you so much. I yield back.
Our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Sally Cole.
Do you mean, Councilmember Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, wanted to thank the city council for prioritizing safe streets as a priority for the year, and to staff and consultants for bringing forward this Vision Zero safety plan. Wanted to be, express thanks for the analysis of where the city sees the most fatalities and serious injuries and collisions, and support the overall proportional focus on reducing the fatalities and, and serious injuries that end or, you know, severely hamper the lives of people who live or pass through Menlo Park. Also, wanted to express thanks and support for the variety of strategies to improve safety, including focus on reduce, on roadway design, reducing speed, and quick-build projects that can help get safety improvements on the street, and, you know, test them out and move things forward. So, thanks. It's really good to see this Vision Zero safety plan moving forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sally Cole, followed by John Leahard.
Hello. I was part of the, I am part of the working group that met this year about four times. I was a representative of the Complete Streets Commission. And I just really wanted to tell all of you that I thought the work that was done here was absolutely outstanding. Every meeting, I felt like the emphasis on data was, I respected it tremendously, and the work of both Hugh and Dana's staffs to look at the data really closely and do the best job they could to produce a really compelling action plan from Menlo Park. So I fully support the approach they're taking. I just had a couple of comments based on my experience on the working group. Just a few things. I appreciate that the action plan that they are presenting tonight and have come up with doesn't just address the large, high-speed corridors, which clearly, from the data, pose a tremendous risk, disproportionate risk for the area they cover. And of course, are very critical, but are being addressed with ongoing projects. I thought it was really excellent, the way they took that extra step to look at and identify some hotspots and areas of the city where we see risks now and should be proactive in addressing them. To me, that ensures that these places, like particular intersections or school areas, will not just slip through the cracks and will ensure safety for all users. I also welcome the, like, very focused and sensible approach that they've put forward. I think the Vision Zero philosophy is very sound and will provide a lot of focus and discipline to the way we approach increasing the safety of our streets. And will really help us prioritize projects. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Leahard, followed by Kenneth Ma.
Hi, my name is John Leikoff. I'm a resident of downtown Menlo Park and a representative of the Oak Knoll Safe Routes to School Commission, Committee. We bike to school almost every day. We take Middle. It's been wonderful. Thank you for the improvements. It really makes a huge difference, also getting to Safeway on the weekends for grocery runs. So very appreciative of that, and looking forward to the upcoming underpass. I'm also a child psychiatrist in my professional life. And I know there are many constituencies who are hopefully going to benefit from the Vision Zero plan. And I want to just express my appreciation to the council for, for prioritizing this. One in particular I want to highlight is the needs of the kids in our community, the young people. Motor vehicle deaths have been the leading cause of death for children for many, many years throughout the country, as was highlighted earlier by some of the other comments. That's particularly true here in our community. Unfortunately, recently surpassed by the increase in firearm deaths. There's a whole other set of tragedies. But, you know, just from the point of view of the kids, okay, they're excited to explore the world, express their independence, run around and do all kinds of things. They also have limited impulse control. And when we think about the community and the built environment, there are very few public places where kids can go safely, pretty much at schools and parks. And that's kind of it. So they have to be able to get there somewhere, somehow. So, yeah, really, really important that there's a network of safe routes that they can get around on foot, on bike. And I want to even encourage something that maybe hasn't been brought up, which is, could there even be places where we don't allow cars some of the time? Maybe outside of schools, maybe downtown, you know? There really are very limited, again, public spaces where kids can go and run around safely. And they pretty much have to get there by car. So, anyway, I don't know if, if that's, if that's seen as too radical or whatever. But, for example, outside of Oak Knoll, even if it was just limited to school drop-off hours, right? If there could be space outside the school where we don't have cars. Maybe Santa Cruz on the weekends, maybe around the farmer's market, you know? So anyway, I'm sure there are others, and I'm sure people have, have probably thought of it. But I think I want to just challenge the idea that cars have to be everywhere. Okay, thanks.
And the final speaker will be Kenneth Ma.
Hi, everyone. Councilmembers and Vision Zero Action Plan team. Thank you for your service in helping to make Menlo Park a safer place. I'm a local pediatrician, and I also live in the Burchest Classic with my wife and two young kids. I bike to work, to my children's school, to shopping, to parks. From both my professional and personal vantage point, I'd like to request and advocate for an increased emphasis on increasing the safety of the most vulnerable population in our city, to car versus pedestrian and car versus bike accidents, our children. Specifically, please consider increasing the emphasis and improvements on roads surrounding schools. In the slide deck, you'll notice that students who attend Ensonall, Hillview, and Menlo Atherton High School bike and walk to school on high-crash corridors, including Laurel Street, Ravenswood, Menlo Ave, Oak Grove, and Santa Cruz. I bike on these roads multiple times a day, and I'm awfully worried for my own safety, not to mention the elementary, middle school, and high school students, who are physically smaller, likely less skilled bikers, and certainly more at risk. Furthermore, I'd like to encourage the council to recommend changes for bike safety that prioritizes evidence-based interventions and ones that actually provide protection over sometimes controversial community concerns surrounding parking, emergency vehicle throughput, and cost. This is, in particular, I'd like to request protected, separated, and curb-protected bike lanes that many other cities have successfully installed, that have decreased fatalities and injuries. Paint doesn't actually protect our children. We need to be proactive in protecting them. Again, I know this is a challenging issue all around, but I think it might be valuable for the planning group to have a separate breakout talking about biking and children. Thank you very much for your service.
Great. And that concludes our hands and cards. Mayor Willis, and you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you so much, everyone who gave a public comment, especially the four-year-old who's probably up past their bedtime. And I want to again thank Mr. Louch and our consultant here. I think you heard the enthusiasm, appreciation, and gratitude in those public comments about the work you're doing. And kind of kicking off council conversation, I just want to say that this is about saving lives. And it's, it's the most exciting work I have seen come before council in a long time. We have a lot of, like, declarations, policies, words. And Vision Zero is one of those phrases that gets thrown around a lot. I've been coming to council meetings for many, many years, mostly at the podium, having very similar public comments to the ones we just heard, and saying, you know, we've said we're a Vision Zero city. And now to see this plan make good on that policy is incredibly gratifying. It's a long time coming, and it gives me, and I know a lot of us, a lot of hope for the future of our city being a safer, cleaner, more friendly, safer for kids, just all-around better place to live and raise a family. So the work you have brought forward tonight is incredibly meaningful, and it's, it's really going to change and save lives. So, thank you. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for any comments, questions. So this is a study, just making sure we're framing this properly. It's a study session. Staff has been working with this working group and with different community outreaches on this plan that we have not yet seen the full plan. We're seeing bits and pieces of it. And in order to meet a deadline that we have, it has to be submitted to the state by the end of the year. And that deadline is critical, because one of the sources of funding for the Middle Avenue counting crossing is the state grant money, which is a $5 million check. So we don't want to lose that. So my understanding is that we have to, this is going to go to the Complete Streets very soon, and then it's going to be submitted to the state, and then the council will approve it. So really, if you have any concerns or issues around the plan now is the night to express those, because they're going to be running with our feedback and direction in order to finalize this plan, kind of before we have a chance to technically sign off on it. So they posed a few questions for us, but I know it's been a while since we've, I don't know if we ever talked about this topic. No, we have never talked about this topic. So it's a lot to digest, and I wanted to see where you all want to go with your comments. So does anyone want to kick us off? Councilmember Nash, I know you love this topic.
So thank you so much for this plan. As everyone has said, it's really exciting to see it at this stage, almost done, and actually starting to act on these things. Also, the improvements that have been made around the city, especially in the last year, year and a half, have really been fabulous. I get so much positive feedback about it. And personally, just think it's made a huge difference. So I guess the one piece that I haven't seen in here, it probably is in there somewhere, is I would love to see more outreach to schools, especially to, I'm wondering if private schools are included. We have a number of private schools. So I live on Santa Cruz Avenue. The traffic is heaviest around school time with pickup and drop-off. I would love to see more done, both public schools, private schools. And I also want to acknowledge that there's fabulous Safe Routes to School groups already working. I don't know if they're still, if they are also at the private schools. And then also trying to engage parents who are often trying to run their kids to school, trying to, after dropping off, get to an appointment. It seems that there's a lot of, if we could get residents, get parents to drive a little bit slower, model good behavior for the kids, for each other. I think that it would go a long way toward helping us reach Vision Zero. So I would like to do whatever we can do there. Also, just parents and community members with e-bikes. It is a really dangerous situation right now. Kids riding, obviously, so fast, multiple people on the bikes, some with helmets, some without helmets, many with helmets dangling, many with earbuds in, with, on the phone. And the community, obviously, can do some. I think parents, parents who are, have kids with e-bikes, parents who, perhaps the friends are, their kids are riding with their friends on e-bikes. It just, it's, hopefully, we can do something before it's too late. Thank you.
Councilmember Doran? Thank you. I know you mentioned, I think, first, thank you so much for this presentation. Really excited about it. I'm excited to dive right in. You mentioned the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, the NTMP is coming back to us. When is that again? I want to make sure that folks who are listening in know when that conversation's happening, in case they want to get involved there, too.
Yeah, it's not a specific date, but it'll be sort of early next year as, as a sort of implementing action in a way of, of this planning process.
So stay tuned, everyone. Okay, other question here. And so it sounds like more is coming to us in the future, but I found myself hungry when I was reading this of, I want to see a list. I want to see a matrix with the, the really thoughtful criteria that's being proposed here. These make sense to me, and wanting to see where the projects line up. There are so many tier ones, which, of course, there are so many tier ones. But also, I know that you have a limited staff, and so we can't hit that all at once. And so, as much as we can, getting a clearer sense of the timelines for when things will be moving forward to help community members know what's going on, to help us know what's going on, and to help the workflow and everything. So really eager to see a matrix of some sort, if that comes with the continued work on this, as well as a list that kind of dives into this beyond the maps that, that are also very helpful. Another thing, I really appreciate the public comment that was made about the rubber speed cushions and the idea of these are a lot cheaper, they're a lot easier to quickly plug in. Also, for our conversation on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, that is also a space where I could see those rubber street cushions being useful, those bumps. But I want to highlight that here as well, that, that's something that I'm very supportive of, and eager to see us use more creative interventions to improve traffic calming and improve road safety. I will pause there. Oh, no, one more question. You mentioned here that the city will go after grants to explore safe streets interventions here. Could you talk a little bit more about what that search process might look like, or if it's already ongoing?
Yeah, it's, it's very much on, ongoing, and something that we pursue a lot of those grants already on a regular basis. There's, there are state programs, regional programs, federal programs, all of which have on a regular basis. There's, there are state programs, regional programs, federal programs, all of which have funding sources, some of which are specifically oriented to safety, some of which require a plan like this to be able to pursue. So there are definitely a lot of them at a lot of levels and we could go into great detail, but yeah, there's, there's quite a few that we're sort of keeping our eye on, thinking about how we best sort of position potential projects coming out of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Dor. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and thank you, Mr. Louch, for the presentation. I'm looking at attachment E. Yes, attachment E, and just wanted to just make a few comments. I wanted to see under, what says under funding, if you can add, you have, especially for underserved, if you could add under resourced. And then under the next page, under policies and trade-offs for safe roadways, I was wondering if the school speed zone, instead of it being a mid to long-term, if that could be a near-term? And the next is you have a crosswalk policy, which I fully support. Wanted to get your thoughts about having a crossing guard policy. There are some areas that do not have crossing guards, but it's not just for school students, it's also for seniors. I'm not sure if we need to have a crossing policy, so but wanted to check in with you about that.
So through the mayor, I definitely, I think the suggested wording changes absolutely. The question about kind of school speed zones, so we have been implementing signed school speed zones and at all of our schools that are fully within the city, those are implemented, the ones that are maybe on streets outside the city, they remain to be seen. And that action there is more about starting to think about the redesign of those streets, what I think absolutely we can, we can do, I think it's in long-term because it's a, there's potentially a significant amount of work to be done. And so we'll probably need to prioritize even within those about where we focus them, but certainly hearing from folks tonight and agree that a lot of our schools are on higher speed, higher collision corridors and and tried to bump that up. So that's really something we can look at and try to, to continue to move forward. You know, I think the only question there a little bit is if we bring any big projects, and we're happy to talk about reprioritizing the projects we're doing, but something comes in, something kind of has to move back out. And so there's that little bit of a balance there that we need to think about. And then in terms of crossing guards, I think absolutely, I'm not sure if policy is right thing that we need, but having more conversation and helping to figure out how we consistently fund crossing guards across the city, because I know there are gaps in where and how crossing guards are being funded and trying to close some of those gaps. That's certainly been something at the Safe Routes to School Task Force that's been a subject of conversation and we can definitely look into that, whether it's do this or just, or generally to try to, to figure that out, but certainly as a safety strategy to help people get across some of our busiest roads. Yeah, I can, I can see how that fits well within this.
Thank you. And I have a couple of other comments. The under safe speeds, it has speed cameras and monitoring. And that's long-term. So is that, if you could just, just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Yeah, so recently, in this past legislative session, California, for the first time, approved the use of speed cameras. So for, for enforcing speed limit violations using cameras, that wasn't legal until, and won't be legal until next year, but it's only a pilot of a small number of cities that's been approved. And it does include San Francisco and Oakland and Los Angeles and San Jose. So we'll be getting a lot of great information. It's not something that even if we wanted to as a city, we would be allowed to. So that's long-term, just because it's not within our control.
Thank you. And I think those are all the questions I have for right now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Councilmember Dor.
Thank you. Coming back in the same attachment, attachment E, under education and enforcement, a lot of residents have shared the concern that they have about, do young folks know the importance of being safe here, do they understand these opportunities? So I'm really glad to see that youth leadership is a near-term priority. That's great. And within that, I hope, obviously you're also thinking about e-bikes, even though there's also a separate line item for e-bikes. Under enforcement, I'm curious, so I went to undergrad at Stanford and at times they were police folk that were waiting at the stop signs. And if we didn't stop, they gave you a ticket to go to bike school. And so you have to go show up and learn some more about biking. And I'm, I'm curious if there are other opportunities to continue to strengthen, you know, biker safety and education for our, our younger and our older, everyone, to make sure that we're, we're all obeying the rules of the road.
Yeah, I think absolutely there are. And I don't know if the chief wants to come up and say some words about that as well, but he's certainly welcome. You know, we certainly partner with the police department. We also partner with the schools. Again, you know, very much a topic of conversation in the Safe Routes Task Force to think about, you know, using enforcement as an educational mechanism in the way that you're describing, but yeah, here he comes.
Hi, councilmembers. I'll be, I'll be brief since I'm stealing Mr. Louch's mic here. Yes, we, we actually had a really robust discussion last week in anticipation of this meeting tonight to talk about kind of the combination between education and enforcement and the partnership that needs to be taking place between Public Works and the Police Department as we explore these things. Very interested in your suggestion about bike school. There are a couple of things that we would have to put in place to make that happen. But, but I love where we're going with that and certainly, you know, we recognize all the comments that have come in over the, the most recent months about e-bikes seems to be a growing concern, it's a growing concern for us as well. You know, one of the things that, that we have the advantage of is really kind of a peer-based intervention on that, because we've got a pretty robust bicycle team ourselves. And so doing a lot of traffic education enforcement with the bicycle team on bicyclists, I think, has become something that is really well received by the community and we're going to continue to do that and hopefully grow that as well. As we, you know, get through probably what will be an upcoming foul weather season and back into good weather to get more of our, of our bike teams out doing that type of enforcement and education. But, but I would, would love to explore our ability to turn this into a more formal education opportunity, as you suggested. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Chief. And I'll just say that I am having a meeting with the Chief of Biking at Stanford and would love to try to connect so we can coordinate those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dor. I remember something because this came up years ago and I remember Santa Clara County had some situation that was different from San Mateo County about the ability to, to do that. But anyway, I don't know if that sounds familiar to you, Mr. Louch.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily familiar with Santa Clara County specifically, but others I believe are. And there are other similar kinds of programs that have been set up where you get sort of educational direct, you know, you're sent to education.
I think, I think there are also concerns, just playing out for a second, of potentially unintended consequences because of then if the person doesn't show up for the bike education, then do they have a record with the police? And so it's, it's a complex, it's not as simple, it sounds like a fabulous idea, but it can, it can be a little more complex. But like where you're going with that. So totally agree with the e-biking situation. My mom and stepfather were in town and they're from Southern California and they were talking about teens in their community riding around like crazy on e-bikes. So I think it's a new phenomenon that lots of communities are grappling with and we all need to figure out what to do about it. So the youth leadership is a great suggestion. I agree the crossing guard topic would be a really good one to explore. It's been one that's been brought up over the years. And I think over the years, it's been kind of like a tug and push from the schools and the, and the cities and nobody kind of wants to own it. And so we need to figure out now that we have our Safe Routes Task Force really up and running in that program. I think we might be in a place to take more of an ownership about that because it's so important. I, I'm, like I said, I'm just really excited about the systemic approach. And one of the things with the high collision corridors being these larger streets is that a lot of times there's almost like not a caretaker who's watching that street. So we hear from a lot of residents like Mr. Kirsch, who lives on Partridge, who kind of is advocating for his street or parents that are near a particular school and are very familiar with the street that their kid is biking on and is looking for safety improvements as they should. But a lot of times these high collision corridors are, you know, not as, they don't really have a champion. So I think that the systemic approach and the fact that they account for so much of the collisions and fatalities is, is critical to get this work done. So I just wanted to appreciate that. I wanted to bring up a few things that some of the public commentators said. One was the comment about protected bike lanes. A hundred percent wherever, I mean, I know that's, to me, I see safe streets. I would love it for it to be an instant thing where every street is a protected, separated bike lane. It is slightly, now that I've been working in this for many, many years, progress can be a little more incremental, but I think to me the end goal is always that, that protection. And so leaning into that through the pilots that you're doing and trying to get really a network that is safe for people of all ages and abilities to feel comfortable and safe to ride in is, is really important. I also wanted to elevate the comments, kind of a collective comment that sort of captures the sentiment about near miss, high stress, having a network. These, this almost like a category of corridors or areas that might not be the highest collision, highest fatality, might not be exactly where a school is, but it's one of those spots where you know it when you see it and either people avoid it and that's why they're not biking or walking, or they've, you know, they're scared to death of it or what have you. And it's kind of like the network is only as good as every, as the worst or the broken link in the chain. And so I don't know if there's a way to reflect kind of this network approach. And I know with the Transportation Master Plan, this was a topic that came up quite a bit, looking at kind of these main routes that people need to travel on and making sure that the, each link in that chain is, is on a list somewhere and prioritized because you can have 95% of that route perfect. And if, if there's one street someone has to cross, they just can't get across, the whole thing kind of breaks down. I, I really love the idea of the vision zero branding. I have gotten tons of positive feedback of what we're doing to make our streets safer. I've also gotten people being like, why are you making it harder for me to turn at draggers? You know, I have to pay attention now and drive slower. I'm like, that's the whole point. So really trying to communicate to residents why we're doing these things. It's really about the goal of making zero traffic fatalities and deaths. So when these projects go in, having some kind of signup that says this is part of the city's effort to create safe streets, vision zero, to learn more, click on this QR code or something, but this is your tax dollars at work, making your community safer kind of thing. I'm intrigued by the school drop-off zones. I have read, you know, articles about that where during school hours they do kind of like close down a, a small segment of a street and parents have to kind of walk their kids in. I'm curious if the data kind of supports that, if if the, if the areas of collision and injury and stress are right at the school or if they're on the way to the schools. So that would be something I'm certainly not opposed to, to looking at. And then the last thing I want to, well, I want to say a lot, but I, I was listening to something recently about, so I came up from a Safe Routes background as an advocate and, and Safe Routes, they talk about the E's. So there's engineering, enforcement, education, evaluation, equity. Am I missing one? I think I'm missing some. Okay, there's a bunch of E's. And I've always thought that was a really great thing because it's a systems approach. And you really need to get all of those things right. You need everyone educated, you need it enforced, you need to make sure you're doing the right thing. And the person I was sitting on this podcast was basically arguing that it's really, it can be a distraction having that full systems approach. If you're focusing on all of those things, you're keeping your eye off the most important thing, which is the built environment and really the infrastructure and the engineering. So I just, as I was looking through the to-dos, I think it's great that we're setting the foundation in these near-term things of, I think it's like a working group and and quick builds and these policies and getting the funding and, and rapid response. All these things are fabulous. But I think as we move forward, it's infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure and creating that environment where because we know that the kids' brains aren't fully developed, where we know people are going to make mistakes, where we know people are going to be rushing from point A to point B, where it's the built environment that is, is really driving the, the safety in the long run. So Bravo, I can't wait for this to go. I want to echo what Councilmember Nash said about all of the work you've done leading up to this with the Middlefield and the Alma and Willow and everything. And I just want you to keep going because I think it's making a difference in our community and I think it will continue to. And I think really other communities are going to look to us for what a wonderfully walkable, bikeable, healthy community we're, we're building. So thank you. Are there any other comments or questions, Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. I have one last one and that is on the same attachment, under policies and trade-offs, there's mention of maintenance and street sweeping. So if there's any possibility to have signage for street sweeping, it's only one of the reasons why there's cars still on the street when the street sweeper comes, but I think it'll be helpful to have signs. Thank you.
Ooh, while we're talking about street sweeping, I would just like, as we're looking at vision zero, making sure that our, that our street sweeping policy and I know that's something that gets renewed, we do our assessment district for all this like upkeep, but that as we're investing in the future in our street sweeping contract, both to make sure that our bicycle lanes, which often are near the gutter, have frequent maintenance of the street sweeping. I know sometimes the leaves tend to collect there. And so the bike lane ends up shrinking quite a bit when you have to kind of work your way around that. And then also that we are ultimately investing in either a contractor that has the equipment or our own equipment that enables us to do protected bike lanes and more bollards and, and things like that. That that's not a barrier because we don't have that. We're not building it into our procurement. Councilmember Nash.
As we are looking at safe streets, as we are opening the MPCC and also as we're getting new housing developments online in the Bayfront area, the more we can do to try and have, make connections there and get people so they don't have to get in their cars every time they go, just a special emphasis there if at all possible. Thank you.
So I think you heard just general support. I think we, is there more feedback you need? I'm looking at the slide that says what feedback you want. You wanted the framework used to develop the priority projects. I think, we think you're in the right direction. We might have given you a little other, some thoughts. Gaps or concerns about the priority projects, I think we kind of gave you that. And then a list of actions and then the recommended timeframe for the actions. So is there anything else you needed?
No, I think, I think that's really helpful. I appreciate all of the, the feedback and yeah, definitely think you spoke to. No, I think, I think that's really helpful. I appreciate all of the, the feedback and, um, yeah, definitely think you, you spoke to all of those, um, those kinds of, uh, of issues, um, as we go forward. So yeah, definitely appreciate, uh, what we're hearing. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Nash.
As we go into budgeting season, if you can let us know what it would take to be pushing a little bit harder on the gas pedal, on the bike pedal, yes, not on the gas pedal. Good point. Um, anyway, just to be doing a little bit more, um, so we have an opportunity to increase what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Louch and, and everyone. We really appreciate your work, in case you couldn't tell. Okay. Um, with that, I think we are getting to be moving on to our informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the City Council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the City Council. Informational items are not action items. However, a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item H1, City Council Agenda Topics, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature. Bottom of your screen, calling in from a landlanyer cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on informational item H1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Um, any comments or questions from the council on info items? All right, then we're moving on to our City Manager's Report. City Manager Murphy, what do you got for us?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, earlier there's some, some conversation about our references to the city's vacancy rate this hap, this evening. I'm happy to announce some, uh, filling of some key roles. And so first, I'd like to recognize, uh, Azalia Mitch, uh, the city's new Public Works Director. Azalia may be a familiar face, uh, previous, uh, City of Menlo Park employee, uh, Menlo Park resident. Most recently, it served as the City of San Mateo's, uh, Public Works Director. So we're very excited to have, uh, Azalia back as part of the, the Menlo Park team. So welcome to Azalia. And then I'd also like to, uh, recognize Deanna Chow, who is going to be the city's new, uh, Community Development Director. Uh, Deanna's been with the city for over nineteen years with various roles within the Community Development Department. And so we're very excited for her to be, uh, stepping up into the role of, uh, of the director for the department. And then, uh, thirdly, a- also within community development, excuse me, Kyle Prata is, uh, going to be stepping into the role of Assistant Community Development Director. So we're very excited to have all, all three of them as part of the city's, uh, management team, uh, looking forward to them being able to continue to, uh, fill vacancies throughout the, the various organization. But I think it's, uh, great to have, uh, some stability at the, at the top of a couple of key departments in the city. So welcome to Azalia and, uh, uh, congratulations to Deanna and Kyle with their new roles. So that's the, uh, main update that I have for this evening.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations, um, Ms. Chow, Mr. Prada, and welcome back, um, Ms. Mitch. We're thrilled to have all of you in these positions and we look forward to working with you um, as we make our city even more wonderful. Um, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Um, so, uh, any council member reports? Vice Mayor Taylor. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Dor.
Yes, uh, kind of coming back to our last conversation about safety and roads, um, I'm helping host a community bike ride this Sunday, uh, at eleven AM, meeting at the Starbucks at Sharon Heights. Um, folks can come, we can talk about road safety and ideas that you have for improving things. And then we'll bike down to the downtown Menlo Park Farmers Market, where you can experience local vendors and chat some more if you want to. Um, really excited to be doing this alongside the Oak Knolls, um, Safe Roots to School Committee and other members of the community. So come out, meet some neighbors, and also have a chance to talk about improving road safety for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
A quick report out from Peninsula Clean Energy, um, we just finished a new project, fourteen new EV chargers at Mid-Penn's Gateway Rising Affordable Housing Project on Willow Road. Peninsula Clean Energy provided technical design assistance and incentives. And this is, um, PCE's first EV charging project at a new build affordable housing property. And, um, there's coming soon, I think, um, there's another twenty-four publicly accessible non-residential charging ports coming to Menlo Park as part of PCE's EV Ready Program.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. So I believe we are done. It's nine thirty-seven. I'm adjourning this meeting tonight. Thank you.